I believe I saw some representatives here from NOAA also, so I'd like to recognize you as well. I believe we have Congressman Cooper's office here also, which is indicative of the communities. SCIU, see, we have SCIU. I don't have my contacts or my glasses on, so I see the purple. SCIU. I'll give you a second to get settled. While you're doing that, just want to share with the committee members and the council, I had the privilege of attending a graduation ceremony. Actually, yesterday, I was invited by the Chair, Marty Zygus. Many of you know Marty. It was a newcomer graduation. And each graduate on the program, they listed their home country, and they also listed what their dream career was. So the dream careers, it ranged from teachers, policemen, lawyers, those typical careers that, you know, our young people aspire. What captured me the most was Eliza Jolie from Tanzania indicated that her dream was to be the school director. So I thought that that was really important to share that with you, that our young people, they do watch, they do dream, and they do aspire to be us. With that said, Dr. Joseph, you have the recommended budget that came from the mayor's office. We know what that entails, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Vercher. We're going to have Ms. Hunter begin, and then I will follow with comments, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Henson.
The microphone is on.
Thank you. Budget Chair Vercher.
You're gonna have to pull it up.
Budget Chair Vercher, other members of the Metro Council, Dr. Joseph and his administrative team, school board members, we have Chair Anna Shepherd, Dr. Joanne Brennan, and Christian Bugs. Thank you for being here. Council Lady Vercher, on behalf of the Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools Board of Education, thank you for having us. It has been an honor to, or it is an honor to be here this evening. For the last five months, my colleagues and I have been focused on creating an operating budget that gets things right for the 86,000 students and 11,000 employees in Metro Nashville Public Schools. This has been a revolutionary budget season, one that extends back to January when Dr. Joseph and his team hosted both employee voice sessions and student sessions to hear directly from faculty, staff, and the students about what is needed in a budget. We've revised, and we've revised that budget. And again, we are here today to present to you a budget that is in direct correlation with those conversations. Our budget remains a reflection of what we believe in and what we aim to become. Equity and excellence, those are the two key values describing our goals and our focus for the 2018-2019 Metro Nashville Public Schools operating budget. To us, equity simply means giving each and every student what they need in order to be successful in our classrooms. This includes children who receive special education services, the gifted, affluent, and those students who are economically disadvantaged, as well as our English language learners. Equity means access to high-quality educational opportunities for all students, regardless of their zip codes. And we're committed to creating excellence by design by investing in our employees to ensure we recruit and retain the highest-quality staff and pay them a wage that allows them to live in our growing city. But in order to do these things, in order to ensure that our students are provided the basic human right of a free and appropriate public education, and that our employees can afford to live in this great city, it is essential that we have the funds necessary to move this work forward. Admittedly, for me, it's a little personal. Not only am I a board member, but I'm also the proud mother of a rising 12th grader at Cambridge High School, one of my zone schools in my district, who receives exceptional education services, my most prized possession, may I admit. When I hear her parent educators say to me that she may have to leave her job because she cannot afford to live in Nashville on the salary that we pay her, it stings. So when we talk about funding an equitable education for students, I know firsthand that how that can dramatically impact a student's life, because I know how it has impacted my daughter's life. The Board of Education stands proudly with Dr. Joseph and supports the revised operating budget proposal he and his team has created. However, I have found it, or I find it, a hard pill to swallow that we are not able to provide our employees the cost of living wage that they have not only earned, but they deserve as proud and dedicated Nashvillians. I see that we have some teachers and some support staff here, so if you don't mind standing, I would appreciate it. Like I said earlier, a budget is a representation of your values and of what you stand for and what you want to become. We are all committed to doing what's right for the 86,000 students we serve every day. We are all committed to moving Nashville forwards. And we are all committed to becoming the fastest-improving urban school district in the nation. And this budget is a step in this direction. I look forward to sharing this budget with you today and working with you to ensure Nashville schools are providing the best education and opportunities to our children. Again, thank you for having us this evening.
And thank you, Ms. Hunter, for that clarity in which you spoke. And thank you for your leadership in managing our budget process this year. And I want to thank Budget Chair Vercher, as well as the members of the Metro Council, for giving us this opportunity to share with you our revised budget proposal for the 2018-2019 school year. The revised budget is for $884,299,700, which represents a .6% increase from last year's budget. I continue to remind this city that our goal is to be one of the fastest-improving urban districts in America, over the short term, and over the long term, to be one of the best public school systems in the country. And it's going to take a collaborative effort to make this vision a reality. And while we know that we've made progress in some areas, there is still an incredible amount of work that we must do. Tonight, I will share with you what we've done with the investment that has been made in education within our city and our plans for the coming year based upon the dollars that have been allocated. Last year, as you recall, we received an additional $36 million above the previous budget. Those dollars were strategically used to raise academic expectations for our school system, and it gave a needed pay raise to our committed, hard-working employees. As a result of our collaboration with the mayor's office and the council, we have much to celebrate. We should feel good about the fact that we have expanded access to high-quality early education by improving the quality of our pre-kindergarten seats. We feel good about challenging students to reach new academic heights through our intentional effort to increase rigor in all tiers and doubling the number of students taking advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and Cambridge exams, and expanding our advanced programming at our middle school level. We feel good about the fact that although we've increased our ACT participation by over 1,000 students, our ACT scores have improved in the district to an average of 19, with our non-minority students averaging a 21 or higher, and our minority students slightly improving. We felt good about our efforts to prepare our students for life after high school by paying for testing fees and allowing access to these tests for all of our students, and as a result, doubling the number of students who were tested this year or plan to be tested this year to over 13,000 exams this year. And we feel good about our work in increasing our gifted and talented supports at the elementary and middle school level. Thanks to this council's bold steps last year to increase our budget, we increased the amount of nurses that exist within our school system, and this has made our schools safer for our children. I am especially proud of the work that we've done to improve literacy and mathematics performance this year with our performance and the measures of academic progress in reading and math showing that our scores were among, our scores in grades 2 through 8 surpassed the national average in growth in all grades, with the exception of 5th grade mathematics for all student groups. In addition, student achievement was above the national average for MNPS in 8th grade mathma, excuse me, 8th grade reading and for 2nd grade mathematics. This was the work that we were committed to last year, and these were the priorities that were outlined and what we invested in. You received a summary report this week from Mark North that was shared with the Board of Education earlier this semester. It communicated the progress on the recommendations of my transition team, which was a team of local leaders, state leaders, and national leaders who identified 121 recommendations for us to address if we were going to improve our school district over the long term. Typically, it takes three to four years to address such ambitious recommendations, and our school district addressed 91 out of 121 of those recommendations in one year, as a result of having the resources, having the passion, and having the determination to move our district forward. We completed 30 out of 30 of the recommendations that were given to improve our students' academic achievement. And this is the reason we've seen movement in our academic performance this past year. And while these initiatives have not yet been in place for a full year, or they just made a full year, we know these strategic investments are going to pay dividends over time in the lives of our students. Mr. Henson's gonna walk you through our budget request, but before he does, I will conclude by saying that there is absolutely nothing more important to this city's vitality than having a strong public education system. Our revised budget prioritizes keeping our students safe with investments in social-emotional learning. We plan on adding six community achieve specialists to our school district to give families access to resources that will help them in the day-to-day living, which will provide a great opportunity for success for our children at school. We will also include a social-emotional learning specialist in each one of our four quadrants of the school district to train over 1,300 teachers to give students the tools that they need so they can be successful in our classrooms. 20 elementary schools will receive intensive support and a case manager to address chronic absenteeism of our students within our school district. And we plan on adding six new college and career counselors at Pearl Cone High School, Glencliff High School, Maplewood High School, Stratford High School, Overton High School, and White's Creek High School to increase full-time counseling services to our student. This budget also placed more money into the large majority of our schools while providing more dollars than ever before to our needy schools. In addition, we're proud to be including $5 million additional dollars going directly to support special education students within our district and $2.2 million more dollars to better support English language learners within our district. These budget enhancements have been preserved in a time in which we had to make $17 million in hard cuts that will be felt next school year. 30 central office positions have been eliminated. Central office positions have been restructured, and spending has been dramatically reduced in the areas of general expenses, contracts, central office supplies, central office materials, and travel. Our STEAM initiative, which has been popular and anecdotally has changed how teachers teach at the middle school level, will not be expanded beyond the 18 schools being served. Most painfully, we could not provide salary increases to our employees, particularly our parent educators who serve our needy students in a position that we, as a school district, have a difficult time recruiting and retaining staff for due to our pay scales. In addition, we can no longer fund reimbursements for students to take advanced coursework and industry certifications at the high school level. These cuts will be felt by thousands of students and employees. At this moment, we literally have the opportunity to write a new chapter in our city's history by ensuring that we double the number of students reading on grade level by 3rd grade by 2025, as our Blueprint 25, which was collaboratively developed with the mayor's office, the Public Education Foundation, and other civic nonprofit and philanthropic organizations, has declared, "We can end the school-to-prison pipeline in our city," as is communicated through the great work we have done with our PASSAGE initiative in collaboration with the Office of Juvenile Justice, Oasis, NOAA, and our police department, "if we continue to invest in our children and their education." In this time of difficult budgets, we simply ask you, the city council, to show this city that education is one of your top priorities by giving us a proportion of the city's budget that represents your commitment to making education in this city a top priority. At this time, I will pass the microphone over to Mr. Henson, our chief operating officer, who will walk you through the specifics of our budget request.
Thank you, Dr. Joseph.
Just want to make sure, council members, do all of you have the budget book? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thanks, Rosie. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Vercher. You can see on the front page of the bound document that you have in front of you that this particular revised budget was approved by the Board of Education at last night's board meeting. So it's fresh off the press. If you'll turn to the first page, I will spend most of my time on this page, because this is intended to reflect a summary of changes from the current fiscal year 1718 budget to the proposed fiscal year 1819 budget. Each page has a page number in the bottom-right corner, but again, I'll spend the majority of my time on page number one. One thing that's important to realize is that the school district has approximately $25 million in obligations upfront. There's been a lot of question regarding how can a $5 million increase in the budget equate to a $17 million cut? And I'll start at the beginning, at the top of the page, which reflects employee compensation. And you can see the two items there that have numbers beside them. The first is labeled "certificated insurance." Our teachers and certificated employees, their benefit, insurance benefits, are governed by what's called the Employee Insurance Trust, which is made up of three school board members, three M&amp;E A representatives, a retired teacher representative, and an administration representative. And through the actuarial calculations and the recommendation of the consultant to the trust fund, the insurance trust approved a 7.9% increase in insurance costs, insurance premiums for our teachers and certificated employees, which equates to approximately $6.3 million. The next line down indicates "certificated pension." All of our teachers and certificated employees are required to be members of the state retirement plan, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, or TCRS. And we received word early on that the employer contribution rate to the state pension plan for our certificated employees was going to increase by approximately 15.2%. And this is paid by the employer, by the school district, which equates to around a $4.7 million increase. We also have increased costs as it relates to the transfer of funds to our charter schools based upon the additional enrollment in our charter schools. Many of our charter schools continue to add a grade, as was approved in their application and their contract as part of their growth plan. We also have an increase in the per pupil amount that is transferred to our charter schools that equates to the total state and local revenue per student, which is required by state law to be transferred to our charter schools. That equates to approximately an additional $14 million being transferred to our charter schools. So if you take the $14 million for our charter enrollment increase and the per pupil increase that goes to charter schools, and the $6.3 million for our certificated insurance increase, and the $4.7 million for our certificated pension increase, we have approximately $25 million in additional costs. We also reflect on the front end savings due to vacancy and turnover during the year. We know that not all of our positions are fully staffed throughout the year, and so this is an estimate based upon historical trends. And so we're estimating a $3 million savings for vacancy and turnover. So the $25 million less the $3 million equates to $22 million, and as indicated, and as you think know, the mayor's budget proposal proposes to increase the school district budget by $5 million, thereby requiring $17 million in actual cuts or reductions to the current year 1718 budget. And so I'll walk you through some of those on this page. They are mainly at the bottom of the page. One thing that we did decide to do, as Dr. Joseph indicated early on, was that we wanted to enhance the student-based budgeting model that we use to fund our schools to increase the weights for our special education students. That equated to approximately five, an additional $5 million to provide the services and the staffing and resources needed for our exceptional education students. And also to increase the weight for our English learner students, increasing that weight from 21% to 24% based upon additional numbers of English learner students and a required reduction in the per, the student-to-teacher ratio as required by the Tennessee Department of Education. That was a $2.2 million investment. And so you see down at the bottom, $7.2 million into our student-based budgeting formula that goes directly out to schools for schools to budget based upon their school improvement plan for those enhancements to the allocation model. The largest part of our reduction, which was actually approved in the original budget that the school board approved back on April 16th, was the decentralization of the reading recovery program, which was an approximate $6.2 million reduction. As Dr. Joseph indicated, we also put a pause or a delay on the second phase of the implementation of our STEAM program in our middle schools, STEAM being science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. And so that reduction in that contract was approximately, is approximately $1.9 million. As also Dr. Joseph mentioned, we are delaying or pausing in providing funding for all of our students to take the advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and Cambridge advanced academic exams, as well as the industry certifications in some of our career and technical education courses. That equates to approximately $735,000. We have reduced travel throughout the budget in line items to almost $700,000 reduction. As Dr. Joseph indicated, we are reducing 30 central office positions in addition to those positions through the reading recovery program. And then we combed through the budget to reduce contracted services, to reduce materials and supplies, and to reduce other expenses throughout the budget. But one thing that we were intent on doing, and this budget reflects that, is that we are not touching any of the school budgets that have already been put out there for schools, have been approved for schools, so that schools can go ahead and begin planning, can go ahead and begin hiring teachers and other staff. So this budget does not touch or reduce any individual school budget that was originally sent out to schools a couple of months ago. So that's mainly the changes as far as the reductions go. You can see on the summary page that we are reducing 111.5 positions in this budget. The additional funding, as indicated, was an additional $5 million, which Dr. Joseph, as he said, was a 0.6% increase. And so I will move from this page and spend a little bit more time going through the remainder of the pages here, so you know what's here, and then be happy to open it up for questions that anyone may have. On page two, we always show a detailed listing of position changes. And so this shows all of the positions that are being reduced. It's a gross number of 129.5 positions. It also shows the positions that are being added. All of these positions that are being added are part of a reorganization in our student support services area and actually reflect a net decrease in the number of positions in the student support services area. But again, this shows all of the positions that are being reduced or added with a net decrease of 111.5 positions. This does not reflect any position moves that might be made where a position is being moved from one account to another. Page three shows the work schedules, work calendars, for our 10-month support employees. Obviously, these are very heavily driven by the number of student days, student enrollment days. They all receive an additional 16 paid time off days for vacation and holidays, and also receive pay to come in and work on non-school days for things such as orientation, training, and administrative duties and responsibilities. There is no change from this year to next year as far as the number of paid days based upon the work calendars that are established for these 10-month support employee positions. Page number four provides a breakdown of our early learning centers. We have a specific account in the line item budget, account number 2328. We have early learning centers at Ross in East Nashville, Avoneta Davis in the Bordeaux area, Casa Azafron in South Nashville, and then Cambridge in Southeast Nashville. Cambridge, as indicated by the asterisk, is basically funded by the federal pre-K expansion grant, but this just shows a breakdown of our early learning centers totaling 62.4 positions in a budget of approximately $3.7 million, which you will find in the line item budget under account number 2328. Page five shows our two alternative learning centers in account number 2600. We have one at Johnson and one at Bass. Again, total employees, total positions of 46, and budget of approximately $3.2 million. Again, you'll find in our detailed line item budget in account number 2600. On page six, we break down the detail of our non-traditional schools, found in account number 2650. Our middle college, early middle college program at Nashville State, our big-picture high school, the academies, one at Old Cockrell, one at Hickory Hollow, and one at Opry Mills. Our virtual school, our transitions program, which is located at Bass, which assists students that are, have been incarcerated as they come back into the public school system. And then the Cone School, which is intended for overaged and undercredited students to help get them on track to graduate on time. A total number of positions of 99.3 with a $7.9 million budget, which again can be found in the line item budget, account number 2650. Page number seven shows our charter schools, our estimated enrollment, as well as the estimated per pupil rate. We have, we will have 30 charter schools next year. One has been approved by the State Board of Education. We have two schools in the state's Achievement School District. We are, when the budget was originally put together, we were estimating a per pupil rate of $9,800 students, or $9,800 per student, excuse me. You can see what the estimated number of students are for our charter schools. And then over in the far-right column, the asterisk reflects those charter schools that will be adding a grade next year, where the enrollment will be increasing for those charter schools. We also reflect the State Board of Education Charter School and the two Achievement School District charter schools. The state allocates revenue to those schools prior to dispersing it to the school district. It comes basically off the top of our state BEP funding and is sent directly to those three schools. On page number eight begins our detailed line item budget, document number eight. It's a 31-page document that shows the current year approved positions and budget. Columns E and F show the proposed position changes and budget changes, and then resulting in columns G and H, which would be the proposed positions and budget for 2018-19, with some remarks over in column I to try to provide a little more explanation to some of the line items. But this provides a lot of detail, a lot of detailed information for you by line item, and it's the same chart of account structure that we have been using for a number of years. So if any of you are somewhat familiar with it, hopefully, it'll be a little clearer. Over on page 39, which would be at the end of the detailed line- Over on page 39, which would be at the end of the detailed line item budget, we have three pages which show our different account names sorted alphabetically. So if you have an idea of what the account name might be, hopefully you can find the account number located in the detailed line item budget on document number eight. Then over on page 42, we have our nutrition services fund, which is a self-supporting enterprise fund. Page 43 shows the different revenue sources for our nutrition services fund. The vast majority of the revenue coming into that fund is federal USDA meal reimbursements. We also have, of course, some paid meals. We have expenses mainly in the areas of staffing, which would be salaries and benefits, plus food purchases, as well as other expenses. The total budgeted expenses for our nutrition services fund next year would be approximately $48.6 million. Page 44 shows the expenses for our nutrition services fund in a similar format to document number eight, the line item budget for, for our operating budget, again reflecting expenses of approximately $48.6 million. Many of you have heard that we have a change this coming year in our community eligibility program, which was a four-year grant, four-year program, where the school district no longer qualifies for district-wide community eligibility provision, which means that all students eat breakfast and lunch at no cost. We do have the vast, vast majority of our schools individually still participating in that program. I think there are 28 or 29 schools that will go back to the methodology, the method that was used prior to us, the school district qualifying for community eligibility, where students would qualify for free and reduce meals based upon income levels, family income levels, and those that didn't qualify would pay. And so you have the estimated, or the proposed charges for meals that would be there at the bottom of page 44. We are continuing to provide breakfast at no cost to all students, but there will be a charge for lunch for those 28, 29 schools that would no longer qualify for the community eligibility program. On page 45, we have the work calendars for our nutrition services staff, again based primarily on student days, with 16 paid time off days for vacation holidays, and then additional paid days when students aren't present for orientation, training, and administrative days, unchanged from the current year. Page 46 just provides some data at the time that the nutrition services fund budget was approved regarding our school breakfast and school lunch programs. Not going to spend much time on that unless someone has a specific question. Page 47 begins our federal programs and grants fund, which is a separate fund, very prescriptive in how these funds can be spent. They are flow-through, flow-through funds from the federal government through the state to the school district. All federal funds are on a reimbursement basis, and so there is actually expenditure on the front end, and then there's a request for reimbursement from the state after the expenditures occur. If you go to page 48, which is the last page in this document, this reflects the federal programs and grants, the current year approved budget, as well as what is being projected for next year, realizing that the federal fiscal year runs October 1st through September 30th. So these are very preliminary numbers, but these are reflected here as our best estimate in a total of approximately $85 million in the federal programs and grants fund. So now that you know everything that's included here in the, the budget book, I'll be happy to answer, try to answer any questions that any of you may have. Thank you.
Council Lady Gilmore.
Actually, I was just coming to share my support. I have not been to a lot of the budget meetings, but I did want to make sure that I was at this one, just to let you know, and Dr. Joseph know, and all the school board members know that I definitely support you and, and just really appreciate all the work that you've done and the partnerships that you've made. And my daughter just graduated from Martin Luther King this past Saturday, and it was a wonderful experience. All the teachers, the staff, the support staff, I mean, everyone there, from the custodians, they all pour love to the officers there. It was just very complete. She had a wonderful experience, and I want all students in Nashville to have that same experience. So that's why I'm here, to show you my support, because this is a very busy time, but I wanted to make sure that I was here for this budget and just to let you know that. So thank you for all your work, and I really love the improvements that you are doing in reading and look forward to working with you on that for literacy, because that early literacy is very important, and just wanted to share that. So keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Cooper at large.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you all so much for being here. Chris and the Director. A quick question. We visit this every year, but it's worth keeping in mind. Account 7777, which as I understand it, is really just at the trustee's office, is a transfer to MDHA. There's always this question of what is the school board doing, writing a check to MDHA for incentives? And just so that we under, just, Chris, if you'd walk us through this a little bit, isn't it the school board's share of the property taxes being reimbursed back, being allocated to that district?
That's my understanding. I'll let the, the finance director or any other, any of the other staff weigh in, because we're, we're really, it's just something that's basically deducted from our budget on a periodic basis. As indicated, the current budget for 2018-19 is approximately $8.5 million. The current year budget in 1718 was $8.3 million, but when we received the actual amount for this year, it was $9.5 million.
Were you all given an explanation about that increase? Because I'm not aware of many, any additional TIF loan in the last year particularly.
I don't know the details of it. I was told that it increased for everyone, and so I'm not sure of the details of it.
But for the purposes of the council's understanding, any MDHA incentive loan that is given out actually comes from the school board's share of the property taxes, its proportion of the school board's share of the property taxes.
That's my understanding, hence the name, the property tax refund.
Refund.
That's my understanding.
At that level. Thank you. I'm grateful for that clarification.
Thank you so much. Council Lady Dow. Give me one, there's a lot of y'all in the queue. Give me one second. There you go.
I'm not on yet. Oh, I'm on now. Thank you. Thank you for being here, and I'm also a huge school advocate, and I'm most interested in a couple of things. I didn't, and I may have missed this because I've been multitasking, so I do apologize, but I wanted to see, like, what was the dollar amount about restoring the students taking the AP classes? Because that's very important to me, to make sure that we offer some type of financial assistance there for those students looking to take those exams. What was the dollar amount on that? Do you have anything that has it broken up? Because what I wanted to see, Chris, is something, and I wanted to see the dollar amount on those exams. I also want to know how many students are taking them. I know we had a big push a few years ago to get more students taking those examinations, but also would like to see what, you know, the number's broken down to how many are passing it, because I want to make sure that if we're paying for them to take the exam, we're getting a good return on it, and that they know that it's important since we're paying it. And the other question I have, is there any way for you to break the numbers down? I know, and I don't know a good way of saying this, or politically correct way of saying this, but I like to think that there are kind of two groups. One group are highly compensated individuals, and then there's another group. And I think my definition of what's highly compensated is probably not what other people may think, but I would personally like to see just for, just looking at it, is those people who are not in executive-level positions, managerial positions, specifically the teachers, like, if we funded their increase in pay, because that's who I would like to see receive increase, they need increase. So not necessarily the people making six figures, and there may be some making six figures, but I would like to see those low-level employees, educators. What would we, what would be the dollar amount to fund their increase in pay? So if they're above, just say, I don't know, $100,000, just put that out there. Everything under, I would like to just look at that, and that includes paraprofessionals, administrative staff, bus drivers, all of that. I would like to see that number.
The answer to your first question regarding the advanced academics, the reimbursement on those fees, we are, we are reducing the budget by $385,000, which is reflected on page number one for advanced academics, which would include advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and Cambridge exams. We're also reducing the budget by $350,000 for those industry certification exams. Those numbers are a little low in relation to what actually will be spent this year. They were based upon estimates provided at this time last year. What we have seen, and of course, it's a good thing, we have seen a substantial increase in the number of participants taking those exams, and so the actual number itself will be a little higher than what we're reflecting here as reductions, but those numbers are reflected here. I don't have a breakdown on the particular, the raises as it relates to the breakdown that you have given. Of course, number of our positions would be certificated employees at the school level that would, at the principal level, and others that would exceed that amount, but we don't, I don't have that broken down. I can say that a 1% raise for all employees of the school district is $5.2 million, and a step increase for all the employees that qualify is a $7.8 million increase. But, but we will work to see if we can provide that information for you.
Thank you, and I, and I like to work with you to just isolate that, because what I'm most interested in is, I know that we have a lot of educators that are working in the classroom every single day that are not making enough money to live in Nashville, and I do know that we have some that are making a lot more. And I'm most interested, and we keep, we have this conversation every time that I'm advocating to get more of those teachers' pay increased. It ends up going to the administration, and I think it's a little disheartening for me when I hear. When, when I hear, you know, these educators, when I, I struggle with this, and I've had this conversation with you before, that we continue to look for ways to compensate educators, but every time, and I'm specifically talking about those educators who are in the classroom with the students, that's who I'm most interested in, making sure that they're compensated. I keep hearing, you know, over and over again, each time that we fund the budget, or each time we raise taxes, I hear the same, you know, feedback from people that, no, we didn't get a raise, or it doesn't make it to the classroom. So we have struggled, and I've talked to people in my district, even with this budget shortfall, what I've heard from my constituents is that they desire to fund schools, but there's a lot of cynicism between us as leaders who appropriate your budget and fund it and send it over to you to make decisions about how it's spent, that some kind of way and somewhere between what we ask for and what we fund, it doesn't make it down to the right people. And I'm trying to figure out, before my last year in office, how we can come up with a recipe to get the dollars to go where they needed to go. So that's why I asked on that question. And then, if I might, I have one more question to ask, because this is something, and you've probably heard this before, before from me, is that we spend 40% of our city budget on school, and if you actually look at it, and I tell my neighbors this, it's more than 40%, because when you look at our budget that we give to the arts, and when you look at the budget to the parks, and when you look at other areas that we fund, even though we're funding those individual departments, juvenile court, a lot of that money does go down to impact students and youth in our community. And one of the things that I think that we can do a little bit better is, is build more collaboration between the community and our school system. And one of the things that I see is that, for example, out in our area, I do have a couple of nonprofits that each year want to host summer camps, and I was disappointed to hear that the schools charged them to utilize some of those facilities in the summertime to host these camps. And I don't know what we need to do, but I think part of building the goodwill, the collaboration, the support, the engagement, getting parents to come in, and all of that, that will make our students successful involves building some type of collaboration with the community and these organizations. And I would like, you know, you know, specifically one of the groups out in our area, you know, they want to use one of the middle schools, any school, to host a program that our students like, and I would like to see, you know, I noticed that the school charged them an exorbitant amount of money per day to utilize that facility, and I would like to see us make some changes there.
We do have a use of facilities policy, and the charges are based upon a calculation just to cover the district costs for utilities, et cetera. And so it's an established amount that's similar to what parks may charge a nonprofit to use their facilities as well. So it's, it's something just intended to cover the school district's costs.
Right, and, and I think those dollars are exorbitant in comparison to other public facilities. And the thing is, is that when these young peoples, their families, they're paying taxes already to use these facilities. I mean, they're already paying taxes. We, the city owns those. I think we could come up with a better formula of collaboration. And the reason why I say that is that when those students, the parents come there and they participate in these programs, you're getting them to come to the school, you're getting them engaged in the school, comfortable with the school, and that it builds goodwill. So sometimes it's not always about the dollar, but the amount of money I saw one of them paying for the use of a couple of rooms far exceed anything I've seen. I mean, Class C commercial property in our district does not charge that much for facility use. So I do want to work with you on rectifying that and getting a good amount. I think that will help build, you know, goodwill between the community and that. And I'll, I'll leave my questions there. I did send a list to Mark North of some other things that I would like to see, but again, I want to say that I appreciate you, Dr. Joseph, and what you brought to the district, and I look forward to working with you all.
Council Lady, can you make sure you copy council staff on that too, so it can get uploaded to the SharePoint?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Just to be clear, Mr. Henson, so that committee members and council members that's here understand that number, for a 1% increase, that's $5.2 million. For the steps is another $7.8 million. So I just want to make sure that, that we're clear on that number. It is without saying that everyone in this chamber is committed to education and committed to paying everyone in this room, but we do have budgetary constraints. So committee members, council members, that's the number. Comb through the budget. That's my charge to you. Go ahead, Mr. Henson. Did you have anything else?
That was correct in what you said. Thank you.
Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, let me say, Dr. Brandon, thank you for 12 years of service. You and I began on the, on the board together. And I, I think you're going to write off and call it a day now. So, but 12 years, thank you very much for the, the amount of service you've given to the city. And Ms. Shepherd, I'm not going to sing it, but I'm going to say happy birthday. I believe I'm right on that. Am I, am I correct on that?
You are.
That's what I thought. And you said, you told me you're 39 today, right? 39, okay. All right, good. So, and the reason I did that is because my wife sent me a text before we started this, and she said, be nice, and I said, I'll try. So I've done that now. All right. So, as we go forward.
Be nice, Councilman Glover.
Oh, I will. No, I will. You know, Mr. Henson, it was you, and Council Lady Gilmore, myself. I'm trying to remember if Council Lady Johnson was here eight years ago, and maybe remember Brandon, Dr. Brandon was here. Outside of that, I, I'm not sure there were any other elected officials that were in the room. And eight years ago, we had a very hard decision to make, and a massive challenge before us, but we did it. And the reason I'm bringing this up, I, I would, I'd like to expand just a portion, if I may, with regards to the 1%. I know with the 5.2 and the 7.8, get that piece of it. If we had moved, if we remove the administrative piece of that, and I don't know if it's possible, because when you start talking about certificated and this and that, I know we get into all kinds of rules and whatnot, but I would like to know if that's a possibility, because for myself, when I was on the board, the main thing that I cared about is never touch the classroom. Send the money to the classroom. And so, and Chair, I'm, I'm bringing this point up because I have combed through the budget, and I have been on the phone, but as everybody knows, sitting in this room, we have no authority on, on the way you guys spend your money. I have identified some areas that I think I have identified some areas that I think you could save millions of dollars, literally, and not touch the classroom. I'll do that in a sidebar, I'm not going to say it publicly. But if you're able to do that, what I would like to know, and here's the only question I'm going to ask you, because you're exactly right, Chair, we're in a tough, we're in a tough spot for not only the schools, for the city, for everyone. If that money was freed up, would it be utilized? Would that be a top priority to make sure that you fund as much of a raise or step or whatever, however the board determines it should be? Would that be, would that be the number one priority that is done via the administration and the board?
Without, without question, the board has been clear that our priorities are to ensure we have adequate compensation, and we also want to do something for our students. If we can get the industry certifications and AP back, because that, I mean, we've, we have 13,000-plus students, doubled the amount last year as a result of us paying, because we don't want poverty to be, poverty to limit opportunity for our students. So, those would be our priorities.
Okay, and, and, and I agree with that. I just want to know, because I will, you know, as Mr. Henson will attest, I don't mind telling you where hard cuts can be made or what may have to be done in order to make those cuts, in order to put the money and direct it to the classroom. Because if we don't do that, then we don't do, we're not doing our job.
And we would welcome if you know of opportunities. The only thing we, the board has been clear with me about, and I agree with, is that we won't balance the budget on the backs of our lowest-paid employees. So, if it's, if it is a matter of, you know, something that would require us to outsource and require us to give people less dollars, we'd be hesitant in doing something like that. But if there are other options that you see, we would welcome it.
Well, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not going to mention it publicly. I will tell you, hard decisions have to be made, and unfortunately, I'm making these comments right now because we're going to have the same conversation next year, because of where we are financially in the city. And so, with that, I think the key thing is to try and understand, and I know this committee, and Chair, forgive me, but I mean, I know this chairperson and the Budget and Finance Committee is committed to doing everything we can to try and do for the raises that were promised to the other employees in the city. We don't know if we can get there, but we're going to work hard in order to do so. And so, if we're able to help you identify an area that would not hurt the overall system and would allow you to pump money, again, towards that classroom, that was the only thing that I just wanted to hear. And no, you won't like my, you won't like my suggestion, and I'm okay with that, but it will allow money to go and be utilized in that, in that manner. So, thank you, Chair, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Davis. Anthony Davis.
Thank you, Chair, appreciate everyone being here today. Had a great morning at Rose Bank doing Career Day. I think I saw one of the teachers back there, so shout out to Rose Bank Elementary in the neighborhood, and you guys know, because I say it every year, a graduate of MLK and MNPS, and always want to be supportive of you guys. You got one of my big questions answered. If we were able to come across more revenue, the priorities are the step increases for all employees and the potentially 1% or more, and then the AP testing. Is there anything else that's like a high priority if you, if we had more revenue for you?
Our paraeducator pay grade and textbooks, that would be right up there.
Textbooks, okay, great.
What's the cost?
The paraeducator pay increase, which was increasing their pay grade by two grades, we estimated at $1.3 million, which was included in the original budget approved by the board on April 16th. We also had additional funding for textbooks at approximately $2.5 million. This year is the science adoption, and so, we know that these books are expensive. It's the science, fine arts, health and wellness adoption for the textbooks. So, we had a $2.5 million increase in the original proposal that was approved by the board that's no longer included in this revised budget.
Okay. Just a couple, couple more things I wanted to go through. Pre-K, of course, if we can, I mean, it's not the right time to talk about continuing to grow that program, obviously, but, you know, in the future coming years, the struggle is definitely real out there. I didn't get into any of the pre-Ks I applied to recently, so I know we just don't have a lot of spots, you know, and it's really hard for parents to get into. I'm sure others in East Nashville and all around the city are struggling with that. And we want to keep that enrollment going up, you know, we had some enrollment issues, and it starts with pre-K and kindergarten and everything, so get these guys in early, get them bought into MNPS, you know, get them in the system, and, and let's get everybody in there. You guys know I'm a reading recovery fan. We got invited to it, a lot of us went to see the program. Thank you. Telling jokes all night. No, thank you, appreciate it. It changes lives, you know, as we know, are, my question, are they, are they going to have jobs, all these reading recovery teachers, or some of them?
Yes.
Okay, so with the reallocation, that sort of thing, we've, we're hoping most of them are going to have jobs, or are the positions going somewhere?
They will have jobs in the system.
Okay. That's good to hear. Again, you know, I understand the reality, I understand the bang-for-the-buck argument and conversation, you know, with reading recovery. I just making the comment, we did like what we, those of us that went, we liked what we saw, we, you know, we see it changing lives, so. Charter schools, obviously, we're growing, we're sending more money, you know. We'd be spending a lot of that money anyway in regular schools. I mean, I kind of get it's not like a one-for-one savings and all that. I just make the comment, you know, we've got continued growth because of the schools we have, you know, it's not like we're adding schools, which I think is great, and we've slowed down the growth of adding schools. You know, if we have any problems, I know we've got one under investigation now, and I, I don't know where that's going to go, but, you know, just keep watching if there's any problems, we can't be afraid to cut as well, if we've got any issues. But I know we have a lot of them doing well, and I'm very proud of that at some of the schools that we have. Do you think in the, I know we have contracts, a lot of contracts out there, is there any, is there any further room to cut any contracts? It seems like you guys have combed through your budget and looked through everything with some of the third parties. Is there any more room there that you think you can find, or in the, you know, are they all sort of running through this next year?
As you indicated, we have gone through all of the contracts, and as you look through the detailed line item budget, you'll see the contracted services line reduced in the vast majority of those accounts. So, we have looked at all of our contracted services, as well as our non-school materials and supplies, as I mentioned, travel, other expense. So, we've tried to go looking at the non-personnel line items first, before we started looking at positions and reducing those as much as we can without going too far backward, and so, we feel like we've, we've exhausted that at this point.
Well, appreciate the answers. I guess to sum it up, I mean, my general feeling is, we need to fund you guys as much as we can. You know, I feel like we're the, it's left on our shoulders, you know, obviously, with the situation. You've been dealt a tough card here, you know, it's all on our backs. Someone has to have the guts to, you know, either raise the revenue with a rate correction or figure something out, and I think it's 100% up to us, you know, and we want to, we want the teachers to have their step increases and the support employees, 100%. And I understand that's, that's on our shoulders, that's our responsibility, and that's what we're looking to do, and, you know, a few of us are, have put our names out there already. I was planning to sign onto that as well, and, you know, here I am talking about it. But I also don't necessarily love this land sale idea, you know, we've been talking some about that, so we can talk further about that in the future. I think there's some, you know, there could be some other choices, you know, we need to think about affordable housing, MDHA, potentials there, you know, and your land is extremely valuable. A lot of us just don't like the one-time land sale deal to, you know, fund operating, so, we, you know, we've just got to make some smart decisions here, we've got to make some bold decisions, and, you know, we need to do it for our children. And we all want the best for the MNPS students. Many of us are or were one, I think you're always one, if you were one. So, we've just got to figure it out. Again, appreciate it, I know you've been dealt a tough hand, and again, we're all, I think we're all just trying to argue over the best way to spend the money and the best way to figure out how to have enough money to support you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Our political will is definitely going to be tested this budgetary cycle. Let's see who's next. Councilman Pully.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have a couple of brief questions, but before I dive into this, I do want to say that I echo the sentiments of a lot of my, of all of my colleagues, actually. Education is a top priority of ours, and as we all look back through our lives, when I look back on my life, the heroes in my life are educators and administrators and coaches, and they all come through the educational system. They have a tremendous impact on the lives of our children and on us as we grew up, and we all know they're grossly underpaid. I can't think of a more important position in life than educating our children. Heck, they spend more time around our kids than we do sometimes, so we all appreciate that, and we all have a tall order in front of us. We're all going to do whatever we can to make that happen. Specifically, I want to ask you about the paraprofessionals. I know, I understand there's $1.3 million that would have been allocated, and it's not, and I want to talk about the importance of that position. How many of those do you have currently? How many are budgeted?
I'm not going to have that number off the top of my head. It would be a combination of our pre-K, para-eds, as well as our exceptional education, para-education, para-educators. The vast majority would be exceptional education. I just don't have that number off the top of my head.
Is it somewhere around 600, does that sound right?
That sounds about right, but I hate to give you a number without knowing for sure, but we can give that to you.
You know if they're all filled?
That I don't know.
All right. Don't you struggle to fill those because of the current pay rate that the paraprofessionals are under?
Yes, we do.
Can you tell everybody what paraprofessionals do?
Paraprofessionals are, serve as the second adult in the exceptional education, typically the exceptional education or pre-K classroom with the teacher, spending the vast majority, if not all, of their time with students, working with students and working with the teacher, providing assistance to the teacher in the instructional process. And yes, we do struggle with attracting and retaining those para-educators.
Do you consider these a pretty essential part of the educational process, not only for children with disabilities, but for all children?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I think that's a very important item, and I think we ought to really make that a priority as well, but I think you already have said that you do, so I appreciate that very much. Well, I'll commit to doing whatever we can to, within the framework of what we've been given, to help you and, in any way we can. I have nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Pully. Councilman-at-Large Mendez.
Thanks. So, I want to see if I got a fact straight, and then I think I have a question. Compared to the budget that y'all originally requested, I understand that it's $39 million and change less is what you're proposing, what you've brought us here today. And by my math, the things that you identified as priorities, which I think at 2.5% COLA, and then the step, and then the AP and other exams, and the paraprofessional education, the textbooks, I got to somewhere around $25.3 million roughly. Can you describe what the, the rest of that 39 is? I know it's probably getting into smaller dollar amounts, but, you know, there's still a $14 million-ish dollar gap that we haven't talked about, and I'm curious to get some description of what, what's covered in that.
I'll attempt to. It goes back over a month when this was proposed, but we had looked at increasing the capacity in our human resources area to be able to recruit teachers. We had increased our social-emotional learning support significantly for our students, and that was scaled back quite a bit. You have mentioned already the additional textbooks. We had an addition in our health services contract with Metro Public Health Department to provide nursing services to our students. Glancing down the, the list, I would probably want to just provide a copy of the April 16th budget that the board approved. Those are the pieces that are, that are coming to mind. As you said, the step increase of $7.8 million, and then the 2.5% salary increase for all employees, which would be that $5.2 million number multiplied by 2.2 and 1/2.
So, that comes to 13 million, right?
So, it's, all of that is going to end up being pretty close to the total amount that we were requesting, which was a $44.7 million increase.
And, I mean, this is a little bit of a softball, but I am interested in hearing Mr. Dr. Joseph talk about this. These other things that we, we got at least a partial list of, of trying to increase the HR for teacher recruitment and the social-emotional learning and the broadening the health services for nursing and schools, I mean, are those things that y'all consider to be fluff and extras or instrumental to delivery of education?
We believe they're instrumental for, I mean, a high-quality, world-class education, the type of education that we think our children and this community deserve. Now, we are, you know, where, when you're under-resourced, you, you, you over, you know, you have to have strong people and you're working, working them harder than ever, and they're, they're away from their families, they are experiencing lots of stress. I mean, I look at our human resources department, I mean, for a district that has 11,000 employees that hires 900 teachers a year to only have, you know, two or three recruiters, and then, then people question, well, why don't my emails get returned when I'm, when I'm looking for the job, or why can't we onboard? Well, because we don't have the capacity to execute, to provide high-quality service. And we, when we think about adding those types of positions, I mean, we're thinking, is it absolutely essential to even put it in? Because we know there's going to be scrutiny whenever you put something outside of the classroom. And, and we have prioritized putting dollars directly into our schools. I mean, we put more dollars directly in the schools than most large school districts in the country, without question. I believe 54% of our overall budget goes directly to schools, and, and this particular budget, again, we prioritize that, even though it was tight. We said first, special education students, ELL students, let's give them their money, lock it in, because they've been woefully underfunded historically within this district. But it is a, it is a challenge, and we have been very thoughtful in putting dollars what we think will give us the greatest quick impact, because we believe as we continue to get results, if we, as we have gotten with the dollars that we have received, then the community will see and feel the return on investment. So, we're very thoughtful and strategic, and there, I mean, we had over $100 million in need, but then we pare it down to what's going to get us the next step to keep us moving forward, and that's where we came up with, with what we proposed.
And then, one last question, and it's got a little bit of a, I guess, a preface. The, the preface is that, so in, in the history of the metropolitan government, we've, we've never gone from one property value reassessment to the next without an upward rate adjustment at some point, but the statements from the fact of what we did last year of not having the rate adjustment and the, the proposed budget, this year doesn't have it, and the statements publicly would be that it wouldn't happen next year. I mean, there's, there's a real possibility that the school system goes at least next year without being able to make any forward movement on budget whatsoever. As an administrator, can you speak to the, the impact of going several years of squeezing your people in your system, and is that something that can be recovered from in one year, or does it take longer than that to make up the lost ground? And maybe if you can just, like, put some meat on the, the practical effect in terms of people and everyday decisions to go through extremely stressed and no growth on budget for several years in a row, and whether that can be fixed quickly?
It will not be quick, it will not be fixed quickly. I think you have, you know, when people are stressed, I mean, high-quality, talented people, and we have some very dedicated, hard-working, committed, talented employees. I mean, they can go other places. I mean, good people can get a job. I mean, that, that's just, that's just the reality of the world in which we live in. Or a district that has been challenged with recruiting and retaining teachers, I mean... I mean, for my two years here, we have had, at the beginning of the year, over 100 vacancies that have not been filled for, for two consecutive years. And we've worked hard to do that. A lot of that is, I think, the compensation, and some of it is just the stress levels that you have. You don't, you don't get that back once, once it's gone. And I think, you know, our, the morale, the morale, when you have people working hard and people are getting you results, and then we say to them, "Sorry, thank you for working you harder than we've ever worked you before, and, and, and thank you for not being with your families, and, but we're not going to give you a raise, because we're just not. It's not a priority." It has an impact that you don't get back. People start getting angry, dissatisfied, underappreciated, not feeling valued. And, and I think, you know, we think about that. I mean, and I know, we hear from, I had an opportunity, as I built this budget, and one of the things I did was I visited 10 of our high schools, and I spoke with kids. Maybe 40 or 50 kids, asked the principals to just pull kids in, let me talk to them, just open for them, no questions, free-for-all. The kids were talking about the stress that their teachers are experiencing, and that, that had an impact on me. It's one of the reasons I put counselors in my budget request, because, and it's one of the reasons I said we wanted to focus on social-emotional learning. It's not just for the kids, it's for the staff. Because if we don't do something, you can't push harder. You know, you can't have an environment where there's high accountability and low support. That's where people start lying, cheating, and stealing. You've got to have high accountability and high support, because then, then it becomes exhilarating, because people feel like they can actually do the job. And right now, we're getting to a point where it's becoming undoable, because I'm pushing hard, because our children deserve excellence, we've got to accelerate. But, but you got to push hard, and you got to give people support. And, and right now, I mean, the push is there, but the support is not. And it takes resource to support. If you want to accelerate, you need an accelerant. And one of the things I continuously say is, I won't, I won't ever make excuses and tell you that we can't get results because we don't have resource, but I will tell you, we won't get as much result as we could if we had more resource.
Thanks a lot, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Vice Chair Shulman, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You are okay?
I'm doing okay.
Okay.
I'm fine, thank you. And I'm sorry that I was late to the budget hearings, and I missed the first part of the presentation, so if I ask you a question, I know I'm going to get into this AP testing, and you may have talked about it, and I'm sorry if I go too far into it, but, again, tell me, been a lot of emails about a lot of different things that have already been discussed, but the AP testing, can you give me a quick synopsis of what this is, and then again, the cost that was associated with it?
Last year, as part of the budget proposal that was ultimately approved, Dr. Joseph was intent on students not having to pay fees to take exams, such as Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, Cambridge, or Industry Certification exams, because we knew that that was an inhibitor for many of our students to be able to take those exams, they just couldn't afford to pay for it. Even though there is a waiver that is available for students who apply for it and qualify for it, there's a reduced amount for that fee for that exam. But even then, sometimes either students don't want to apply for it, or even the reduced amount is too much. And so, the intent was to, for the district to cover all those costs, and so that was included in this year's budget, the current-year budget. And so, one of the things that we discussed as we were putting together the revised budget proposal was, there are going to have to be some things that we started this year that, that we're going to have to put on pause or delay, and that was one of those items. The reduction in the budget for the Advanced Academics exams was $385,000. That is going to be a little low, because we experienced a higher participation rate than we estimated for this current year, but that's just the amount of the reduction from the current-year budget. And the amount of the reduction for the Industry Certification exams is $350,000. Again, it's the same scenario where we did have increased participation over and above what we estimated, but based upon the amounts that we are reducing from the current-year budget for those two items, for those exams, $735,000.
Okay, so, let me go back. Was that in the budget last year, or is this a new thing that we are trying to do this year? Have we been doing this before?
We did that this year.
Okay.
The current year, it was included in the current-year budget proposal for the first time, and it's something that through the revised budget that we have delayed for next year, that we have reduced.
And the reason, the reason we did that, just really quickly, is because one of the things my transition team identified when we came was that they felt that, overall, our expectations in the district were low. And when we looked at, you know, the, why? We had kids in AP classes, but they weren't taking AP tests. We had kids in certification pathways, but they weren't taking the actual exam for us to deem whether they were college or career-ready. And when we delved into the whys, it was many kids just couldn't afford it, because, you know, you have, you have smart kids that are taking four, or five, or six AP classes, and, and you know, those tests are a couple hundred dollars per test. So it became, it is an equity issue then, because we, we can't expect, we're not, teachers weren't expecting, and kids weren't expecting to take the test, because they knew I couldn't afford it, once they heard that. So, for us, we just felt that it was the right thing to do, to ensure, we're going to expect you, if you're in a class, you're going to take the test. Like, it's, it's a no-brainer, and we're going to push you to do that, because it's, it's important. And, and we've got to make sure that, you know, our teachers are trained to make sure the kids are getting it, and, and monitoring it, but...
Okay, so, Dr. Joseph, go, go back to the, so, it's been a long time since I was in school. Thank you, Madam Chair. But, so can you get into an AP class, but it's the test that you're not, or do you have to take the test to get into the class?
No, you don't have to take a test to get in. One of the things we want to do is get, we believe all kids have the ability to do well if they, it's, it's an effort piece, you know, how hard do you push? So we want to give all kids an invitation, access, and an opportunity to experience the, the most challenging courses they can participate in.
Okay, so, starting to come back to me, even though I don't think I had this opportunity when I was in school, but I remember my kids doing this. So, they, they take the, they take the class, and then they take the exam? And the exam allows them to test out of certain things? Is that what you're trying to do with the, with the test score?
Yeah, and it's not just, it's not just AP tests. We, we pay for our dual enrollment, so we have, we're building a partnership with, we have, we've had a partnership with Nashville State, and we're working to dramatically increase the amount of kids getting college credit while they're in, they're in high school. And we're proud that next year, we're going to start in early college in ninth grade, and have them from ninth through 12th, and, and the goal is getting them an associate's degree. But within all of our high schools, we want to get more kids access to college credit, and, and we want to pay for that as well, because research shows that when kids earn credits early, the likelihood of them wanting to go to college and sustaining in college dramatically increases. So as a strategy, we're trying to get that to them early. But again, we don't want someone not having money to, to diminish their, their dreams or desires, or their thoughts that they can be successful, we want them to know.
I think we, I think we, yeah, understand that very clearly. How many, how many kids, do you have an idea of how many kids would have taken this exam in the school system?
Right now, we have about...
Or, there's, there's different exams, I understand, but...
Altogether, there are about 13,800-ish.
Okay, and I'm going to be careful how I ask this question, but obviously, fairness, equity, so forth. In terms of applying for that waiver, is there an income level involved in this? Is that why there's a chance to apply, to see if you can actually get the cost down?
That's my understanding. I don't know if that applies to all of the exams that we're talking about. It may only apply to some of them. I'm just, I'm not an expert in that area, I don't know the details of it, but we can provide that information for you.
Well, I just, what I'm trying to do is figure out how we, this is important, and I understand, we've gotten a lot of email traffic from this, and I understand how important it is to kids. I want kids to have every opportunity available, and I don't want them to have, not be able to take those exams because, because their families don't have the income to do it, that's, that's not fair. So, understand that point. So I appreciate you talking to me about that. The textbooks, 2.5 million? I know you're, you're talking about replacing textbooks in a certain field, I think it's science this year. Okay, so, I think there were stories about textbooks being really, really old. You know, again, we want kids learning new information, you know, we have up-to-date information through the web and other things, but if they're learning from textbooks that are too old, that obviously scares all of us. So, where, do we replace them on a regular basis? I assume we do. And do we have some textbooks that are so old in the system that they've, they've got to be replaced?
Correct. We currently have approximately $2.1 million in the budget for textbooks. Some of the adoptions, and when I say adoptions, it's the subject area, some of them are not very expensive adoptions. For the last couple of years, we've had some of those not very expensive adoptions through, it was many of our CTE, our Career Technical Education courses. Science is an expensive adoption. And so, yes, the answer is we do replace textbooks that have to be replaced, but we do also have old textbooks in many cases. And so, the adoptions are on a, typically on a six-year cycle, and so, the newest science textbooks that we would have would be at, at least six years old. You can make an adoption of a science textbook as a school district, but that doesn't necessarily mean you have to purchase. And so, that's what's happened in many cases over time, is where we have not had the funding to actually purchase all of the textbooks that we wanted, and so, we rely on those older textbooks, as opposed to purchasing new textbooks in certain cases. And so, that's probably what we would have to do in this case as well, and you may want to expand.
Yeah, and I'll just add that, in many of our schools, they only have class sets of textbooks. So, $2 million for a textbook replenishing program for a district this size is woefully underfunding what's actually, what the actual need is. You go into many schools, kids don't have textbooks that they bring home. Like, my, my son and daughter, they don't have textbooks that they're bringing home back and forth. When I ask them, "Well, where's your book?", they'll say, "Well, we only have a class set." You know, that, that is not a good practice, but could be one of the reasons contributing to our slow performance in reading and mathematics, because kids aren't, you know, they're not, we're not expecting them to read at home beyond, because they don't have a textbook to take home to read, in many instances. So, even, even, you know, we put in $2 million in the budget. We estimate the actual cost to replenish science, kindergarten through 12th grade was about 10 to 12 million dollars, if I'm not mistaken. But we just recognize we couldn't put that type of number in a budget request, but, but I would be wrong not to express that the need is there.
A class set, or set of, they're, which means they're just in the classroom, right?
Right, so a teacher has, right, a teacher, you have, yeah, so you, yeah, you're right, you only have 30 books in the class, but you needed 150. You know, so, so those 150 kids, you know, five classes go through and use that same set of 30 textbooks. But you should have had 150 textbooks, you just give each kid a book to take home.
Last set of questions deals with, it's not equipment, it's basically supplies for the schools. So, get worried, I understand the textbooks, just the basic core necessities, paper, and supplies for the classrooms, those types of things. How are we doing? I hear that we run out of paper, things like that. Obviously, it's hard to run a school, hard to run a school with no textbooks. Just the basic core necessities. Have you got money in the budget for that? Are we okay? Are we not okay? Where are we?
All of those supplies, materials and supplies, where paper and that kind of thing would be involved, they're all run through the student-based budgeting formula, and we have added $7.2 million in this revised budget proposal for enhancements to the student-based budgeting formula model. It's left up to principals and their leadership teams to determine how they want to budget and spend those dollars. Of course, the vast majority is going to go to teachers and staff, but schools determine how much they want to budget for things like paper. And it's a part of the budget approval process that schools have gone through now for the last four, five years, every year, where they determine, based upon their needs, goals, and objectives, how much they want to budget for those materials and supplies. So it's not something that's determined by the district, it's something that's determined by each individual school, based upon their allocation through that student-based budgeting process.
Okay, so last question, what, what happens if you miss on your budgeting and you run out? Is there an emergency supply? Is there, the central office has extra supplies in case we have to deal with that? What, what happens?
Well, typically, and I'm not necessarily involved in each individual school budgets, but typically, they are allowed the opportunity to amend their budget, to, to move monies around within the total allocation that they have, once they determine that they may not have enough in one area. And so, that's allowed for schools to do that throughout the year.
And what typically, what typically happens quite often is you find teachers paying for stuff. You find parents paying for stuff. You find, you know, that, that's what, that's what typically happens. I mean, it's, but it's not, it's not just a Nashville issue, I mean, districts around the country. I mean, I was in a very affluent district as a principal. Paper, because you, you know, it runs fast, and it is a huge part of the budget. And, and principals typically have to work with their staffs to, to manage that, those costs and process, because it can, it can get extremely expensive very quickly. So, but, but it's just not typical to have those types of challenges around the country.
Well, and I understand, I just have, obviously, serious concerns about operating a school system with proper textbooks, and paper, and supplies, and we've got to waste to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Council Lady Hurt at large, and I felt that, I felt that. Council Lady at large, Hurt.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. Dr. Joseph, I, I know that we've been talking about the reading recovery, and I'd like to know if the metrics that you received from the reading recovery program produced effectiveness, you know, for student improvement, or, or not, and why was it removed from the... That's the first question. The, the second question is, is that we've had such great improvement, it's been significant over the last couple of years. Will the cuts that you have proposed, or what's taking place, going to stall or decline the progress that's been made?
Thank you for those questions. The first question, we had multiple studies conducted on reading recovery, both by our excellent research team, and one by an external research team, and they came up with the same answer. Essentially, it says that reading recovery has had a very minimal impact on the overall gains. We have great teachers teaching the reading recovery program. Students did maybe catch up or show some growth short-term, but long-term, that growth was not sustained. So, we have been working on a theory of action in the school district from the time I came that said if we focus on culture, and focus on data, and a focus on first literacy instruction, then we will have better academic achievement. It's the first literacy instruction that, where I wanted to make the shift, because right now, reading recovery is an intervention, but we had not been putting enough dollars in first instruction. So the thought was, if we have highly-trained teachers and we get them into our teaching first instruction, then you won't have a need for second, you know, second and third-level instruction remediation, in essence. So, that's, that's the, the reason for the shift, and we feel the shift was appropriate. And your second question is, it's a challenge. Whenever you cut $17 million from an underfunded, challenged budget to start, it's going to have an impact. I think our priorities of not touching the classroom, and our priorities still continuing to focus on literacy and the other work, I'm hoping we'll maintain growth. What we were able to do when we got the $36 million last year was, for the first time, accelerate growth. So what I would say is that, again, to... to accelerate, you need an accelerant. We will, our goal right now is just to maintain. We don't want to lose ground. And we feel what we have proposed in this budget will keep us from losing ground. But we were starting way behind in the race. And our vision says we want to be the fastest improving urban district in the country, not, not maintain below average.
Thank you. I have maybe three other questions, but they're not very long. One is, is that in, at one of our Rotary meetings, they were talking about how there was a high level of performance of students, but then they indicated that only 28% were actually ready and prepared for college. I've not heard much talk about that in this year presentation, so I was wondering if you could address that. And I also noticed that, you know, one of our first charter schools was Smithson Craighead, and I see that it's one of the lowest enrolled. And can you tell me why that is? And my last question is, you can tell me this a little bit later, but how did we get to the point that we don't give books to our students anymore? I mean, that is just insane to me. I don't know. And you don't have to address that now, but maybe at another time, you know, we can talk about that. But I mean, that's so disturbing to me. You know, I mean, I know it's been a long time since I was in high school, but that's atrocious. And I'm just so sad that we've gotten to that point because we're making more money than ever, but yet we are depriving our children of so much.
All right, three questions.
Before you answer, Dr. Joseph, I want to put my question into this, too. So, we know textbooks, right, Vice Chair? We know paper. What about the other things? Toilet tissue, paper towels in the restroom? Is there a, is there a lack of those items also? I mean, are we, that's a yes?
Yes.
So, not only do our students, staff in these facilities, they don't have books, they don't have paper, they don't have toilet tissue, they don't have paper towels. We got to do better in Nashville. Go ahead, Dr. Joseph.
All right. So, your first question was around college readiness. And what I will say is over, over the past few years, college readiness has slowly increased. The Public Education Foundation just put out a study. I will get it to the full council, but it shows that one in three students are still not prepared as defined by the state. We have some of the highest standards in the country, and there was a recent report that showed that, which is a good thing. We went from having some of the lowest standards to some of the highest standards, which is a good thing. And we're moving now as we adjust to that. But we have tremendous work to do. As it relates to Smithson Craighead, I can't speak on why their enrollment is low. I know they have not performed academically. I don't know the culture. I know they've had constant turnover in leadership. They recently had more stability in leadership. Those could be reasons, but I don't know the specifics. I would have to direct you to their, their board or their, their administration to really, to really speak on what's happening there because I don't know. In terms of the books, it is, it is an issue, and it's one that we recognize and we have to prioritize and continuously work to fund. We are, we do utilize, you know, more technology and access to tech books, which you can provide more opportunity and access to kids without actually having a physical book, but it is a challenge, and it's something we strategically need to talk about to figure out how we address that issue. And the issues of toilet tissue supplies and other things, this goes to the challenge of being just in general an underfunded school district when, and this is one of the reasons why when we put 7.2 more million dollars into the budget, and over the past two years, it would be $14.8 million that we've put into student-based budgets. As those budgets increase, it frees up dollars for them to put more dollars in things like supplies and things. Because what happened was under the, when you're, when you have a student-based budget and you push dollars out, but you don't push enough dollars out, then you basically push tough decisions onto schools and principals. So, if I'm a principal that values having toilet tissue and paper, I have it, but then I won't have something else. Or if I'm valuing having teachers and technology, then I won't have something else. It's a, we push a lose-lose proposition on our staffs when we don't adequately fund the budget to start. It's like, you know, you got, you got one pie that you got to cut, you know, 50 pieces out of. Everybody going to get a real small piece if you do it that way. And that's why we have been intent to put more dollars in the student-based budgets that we push out because we recognize then we're essentially making the pie bigger. So, they can have what they need to do, what they need to do.
Thank you, Council Lady Hurt. Give me one sec. I'm just making sure I get all my committee members in. Councilman Pridey Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank Dr. Joseph and your staff for being here today and all the teachers. I just want to add on to your statement, Madam Chair, and that is, you mentioned several things they don't have. And one thing I want to add to this, apparently, they don't have a budget, a sufficient budget. So, that's something that when they're lacking those, those items that, that you mentioned and also in Dr. Joseph mentioned as to why we don't have them, it's obvious there's more needed for the budget, including taking care of our, of the teachers and staff of MNPS. It's always been, one of the things when I first took office, I would take a poll of some of my constituents who were leaving, moving out from time to time. I'd come across moving out of the district, and they would, it really hurt me, hurt my heart when they would say, "We're moving to, out of county to a better school for my children." And that, that did, it would knock me back. And I would, but I've been so pleased and proud of the progress made in the past few years with the school district. And I haven't heard that. And I still ask when I, when I see some of my constituents moving from what various, I'll ask if that's one of them, and then it's not there anymore. So, I'm very pleased with that. And it's because of our teachers and the staff, and we need to make sure they don't leave. That's the important thing. So, because our, our children are only as good as our teachers. So, with that said, there is one thing I, I'd like to ask you about. Several years, maybe a couple of years ago, I attended a roundtable, MNPS roundtable, and they were talking about providing Wi-Fi at the low-income homes where the students, they didn't have to stay at school, or they didn't have to try to find a library. They could, they could go home and access the school system's internet for whatever reason. And they were also, secondly, provide tablets for that. Whatever happened to that? Is that, is that something that just through funding didn't occur? Or what was the reasoning for that? I know it's something that's may not, I mean, IT, your IT guy may need to answer that, but.
I remember the discussion as well, Councilman Pridey Moore, but I don't know what the current status is. And I know we were, as a school district, involved in that initially, but I haven't heard anything about it in quite a while. We'll be happy to see if we can research and, and get an update, get a status update to you on that. I'm just not current on it myself.
Yeah, a few years ago, there was, there was a federal, there was a federal program to give more in internet access to low-income families. And I'm sure that that's what you're referring to.
Right, yes.
Because Comcast had a big role, I guess different people providers, but I know, I was in Delaware at the time when it first came out, and Comcast had a big role, and we were, we were communicating that to folks. But we can get the specifics to you.
Yeah, I would like to see that. I would like to see if there's been any progress made, if there's something this, this body could do to move that along or even the school district, whatever we need to do to assist. I mean, that would, that would answer some other questions concerning Councilman Schulman and Council Lady Hurt about the books. I mean, that would eliminate the shortage of books, as you all well know. I don't need to preach to the choir about that. But that would be something that I think would be beneficial to everyone. And also, again, we can come up with some, there's been some ideas on how we can better fund their budget, Council, Madam Chair. So, we would hope we can get the support of other members. Thank you.
And Dr. Brandon communicated that there is still a program where families can get the internet for $9.99 per month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Henson, you're going to have to help me because I don't remember the exact numbers. Last year, how much did we draw off of your reserve funds in order to accommodate? Because I think there's a little confusion of saying that we provided 36 million last year. I think once you already have money in a savings account, that's not providing new dollars. I believe that's just giving you money that's already set aside, that was already set aside for you. How much was that amount, please?
Of the additional 36 million in our budget, a little over 19 million was from our own fund balance.
Okay. So, in reality, it was about 17, or give or take, right, of actual new dollars? Okay. So, we had to make that up this year. And I just want to say this because it's not going to be popular, but, you know, there's a lot of folks who want us to look at raising property taxes, and I'm certain everybody in the room's going to look at it, and we will have our opinions on that. But I think it's, I think it's very important to also understand the other options that are out there. If I'm not mistaken, and I'll refer to our Director of Finance because I think Mr. Jamison's gone, I do believe under our charter, the possibility of the school board actually bringing a referendum to raise sales tax that could be exclusive for the schools, I believe that's an option. Is it not? Okay. So, it, I was thinking it was because I thought we'd done it once before. Okay. So, I just want to make sure we're understanding what all the options are that are out there. The only thing I'm going to say, and I'm going to say this, and I've said it for the last several years, it's really hard to ask the taxpayers to give additional dollars when we have not been good stewards of those dollars, when we've warned. And when I say we, I'm talking about those of us sitting in here saying, "We've warned of taking money out of the savings account during boom times, when we've had an economy that's been stronger than we've ever seen in Nashville, but yet we still hit our savings accounts." That was bad moves, and it's proven to be bad moves, and we're paying, and we're looking at it right now. But I think for everybody involved in the conversation, we need to understand all the options that are available out there. So, as we're looking forward to, how do we solve this? And it is complicated, and it's challenging, and it's frustrating. But as we look at how do we solve it, I think we need to also just make sure we don't, we don't remove any options off the table. And Chair, I mean, because I've heard you say, I mean, it's an open book right now on how we look at this thing and how we, how we go after it. I know everybody sitting in this room that's in budget finance, those of us who have been here for every meeting, you know, we, we understand the challenge, and we understand the complexities of it as well. And we certainly will do our part. But I just, I think the people of Nashville need to understand it. And I also think the people of Nashville have said, "It's not our fault that you guys weren't responsible with the way." I'm not talking about the school board. I'm talking about just us as a whole on how we handle things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Councilman Mendez at large.
I'll make this brief because it's strongly off-topic. I mean, while we're looking at all the options, I think it's important for people who might be watching this on TV to understand that what we did with property value reassessment last year was historically out of step with what Metro has done. Never in the history of Metro have we gone from one reassessment to the next without a property rate adjustment. The only time we tried to do that previously was in 1984. We had the lowest tax rate of 317 at the time. It made it exactly one year, and we had to do a 75 cent rate adjustment after that. And as I understand it from people in Metro Finance who have been around since then, heads rolled. The budget cratered after not doing it. And, you know, one of the things that we'll have to own up to as a council and as a city is that when the, when we decided last year to be able to say, "We've got the lowest property tax rate in the history of Metro," that there's an implied second half of that sentence that we didn't say last year, and that is, and you just don't get as much stuff if you're going to have the lowest tax rate ever. And so, we can choose to have not as much stuff, or we can do what we should have done last year and make the rate adjust historic norms for how Metro operates. And I'm sorry for going off topic, and I'll stop.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Mendez. I saw your face. Okay, that looks like that's all committee members. So, we'll just go down the list. Councilman Bettner.
Yes. As a father with two children that just finished public schools, I'm very thankful to our public school system and the teachers. They got a great education. People that complain about it, they probably don't have kids in public schools. I'm very proud of my kids' education. So, I have a couple of questions for you. I saw that you reported that we got $7 million less because of the BEP. How many students did we lose to lose $7 million?
And we're speaking of the current fiscal year, fiscal year 1718, where the Student Assignment Office had projected an increase of approximately 1,500 additional students for this year last spring. And that was based upon a lot of data that they use that goes into those projections. We have historically grown by approximately 1,500 students for the last 14, 15 years. That didn't happen. And so, we had planned on receiving additional state BEP growth funding for those additional students that were projected to be enrolled. And when the enrollment actually came in, when the students actually came into school, we not only did not have an increase in student enrollment, we had an actual decrease in student enrollment for the first time in over 15 years. And so, that's by far the main reason why we will receive fewer state BEP dollars this year than were estimated back in March of 2017 based upon those student enrollment projections, based upon the estimate that we would receive additional state BEP growth funding for this year based upon the enrollment projections.
So, that's 1,500 students?
It's approximately 2,000 students because we actually declined in enrollment by approximately 500 students. And so, the net change was about 2,000 students less than what was projected. And so, that was, we weren't, we are not going to receive those state BEP growth funds this year.
So, we have 85,000 students in public schools. We don't know how many of those kids will be impacted by the state law that is going to require that we start deporting people. So, we don't know how many kids are citizens, have parents that are undocumented that will be impacted by this. We don't know how many students are undocumented. So, do you know how many, how many of those BEP dollars we'll lose next year if we start losing all these students from public schools?
Well, the state BEP funding formula is heavily based on student enrollment, but it's also for us, in particular, it's heavily based on the Fiscal Capacity Index that the Tennessee Department of Education uses to determine percentages of funding, state funding levels on the 45 components in the state's funding formula. And Davidson County's Fiscal Capacity Index has increased significantly and substantially over the last couple of years because that Fiscal Capacity Index is very heavily dependent upon assessed property values and retail sales tax base. And both of those have increased significantly in Davidson County in relation to the rest of the state.
You're not answering my question. My question is, if we lose 5,000 students, how will that impact the budget you just gave me today?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay.
If we lose 5,000 students.
So, what will happen with the school if we lose half the students in that particular school? Like, if AZ Kelly loses half the students, what do you do with that school?
We would reduce staffing at the school based upon actual students that are enrolled. We would reduce funding to that school based upon actual number of students enrolled if, if in fact AZ Kelly Elementary loses, loses half of their students, as you indicated.
Okay. So, we don't know how much money we'll lose next year because of this law, and we don't know exactly what will it take for a close, a school to have to close down because we don't have enough students for that school and to do a rezoning of the schools, right?
Correct.
Okay. I need you to run those numbers by me because this law starts in January 1st, and we are going to be required to start enforcing immigration enforcement. That's one item. The other item is each one of your teachers will be required to do immigration enforcement. Do they have any training? enforcement. Do they have any training on immigration?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay, so I need you to also look at the impact of doing immigration training on all these teachers and personnel at the public school system, and how will that impact the budget? All right?
Sure. So just to, just to add to what Mr. Henson said, you know, it is MNPS's position that we adhere to the strict interpretation of the federal law, providing for a child's education regardless of their immigration status. And, you know, no MNPS school will have the authority to report students to ICE, and our principals and administrators are going to be focusing on educating our children. We've communicated that, and that's what we'll adhere to. And we do work with some nonprofits within, within the district, closely with Conexión Americas and others, to get information and share and work with our principals. And I believe we will continue to communicate and collaborate with them as we, as we work through this. But that, you know, we pride ourselves in that partnership. And as we worked through the transition of the last presidential election, we worked closely to make sure our principals are informed, updated, and we are collaborating and working closely with families. And we recognize that collaboration has to be strengthened and fostered as we move forward under these new.
And I applaud what you're saying, but the state law that just passed will force you to do something else. So I hope that you're right, and you don't have to do it, because I care about these families, and I don't want that to happen. But we have a budget going on, and we have real hard numbers that we have to evaluate. And so we need to make sure that we have the money to do this thing that kicks in January 1st. So that's why I was asking for you to run those numbers for us, so we can be proactive in determining that, and to ensure that our children are safe in the schools, and that they get the support they need in terms of social learning, that, you know, when they start seeing all the little friends disappear from the classroom, they have the support they need to cope with things like that. So this is a big thing that is happening. It's starting January 1st, and we need to be prepared to deal with it.
Thank you so much, Councilman. I see Mr. North is back there diligently taking notes, so you got those questions. Okay, thank you. Council Lady Johnson, Karen Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Vorter. Director Joseph, Budget and Finance Chair Hunter, and Dr. Brennan, thank you for being here. Chris, thank you for all of your fiscal leadership. It's appreciated. I'm excited. Everything that I've seen here, I'm excited about. As you embark upon your third year to look at these accomplishments and have one of the goals to start the first-ever college, early college high school program to open this year is, that's huge for us as a city and as a district to have accomplished, and that definitely could not have happened without your leadership. So that is appreciated. I'm going to ask my question again, because you all know, when I was on the board, and even after that, the many times that MNPS is coming for this body, the central office, yes, is an issue. Last budget year, you indicated that many of the central office positions were redistributed into the school level. And so when you say that you've cut central office positions, and I'm looking at the breakdown that you provided, Chris, I started looking at the numbers, and the bulk of those are the reading recovery teachers. So basically, we're not really losing those, because from what I've just heard at this budget hearing, you're saying that they're going to be redistributed out to the schools, or redistributed somehow in the schools in another way. Is that correct?
We have a net reduction of 111.5 positions. And as you indicated, 81.5 of those positions are the reading recovery teachers, which leaves 30 reductions, 30 positions reduced in the central office. Those reading recovery teachers, I believe the plan, and Dr. Joseph can expand on it, the plan is for those teachers would be incorporated into each school's student-based budget to fill teaching positions that exist within each school. And so they would not be an add, they would be within the current allocation of number of teaching positions within all of our schools, and they would fill those roles. And so it would actually be a reduction of those positions in the budget, and those individuals would then become teachers, regular teachers, or literacy specialists in schools, in those schools' student-based budgets.
So those reading recovery teachers that are being replaced, where they're replaced, are they going to be focused on reading, or are they going to be shifted in other educational areas?
So they'd be classroom teachers. So they would, they would not just have reading. They would, they would be a first-grade teacher, or a second-grade teacher, a kindergarten teacher, and what those responsibilities, which would include, you know, all academic areas typically at the elementary school, unless, unless the school departmentalizes, and schools have the ability to do that. Most elementary schools do not do that. But they could, you know, depending on how the principal wanted to utilize them. They also could be used as literacy coaches, or they could choose not to take a kindergarten first or second grade class, and they might want to go back and teach, you know, in another position. We didn't force them to take any particular position. We thought it was important that, you know, people had the opportunity to have the choice to do what they wanted to do, you know. So whatever their certification area is, they can go back and do that. So you might have a reading recovery teacher who might be middle school certified, and might say, you know, "I'm going to go take this sixth-grade English class, because that's what I want to do. I just want to do a content." So we left that open to them.
Well, I'm optimistic, because I trust your leadership, that reading will still be a primary focus with this shift change, because, as you know, the state has made it clear that we're not there in terms of reading in our state, and in the city as well. So that concerns me. The other thing I'm having a real hard time with today is the textbooks. If there's anything that we have to fund, we have to do the textbooks because the children, I've had constituents who have had issues with not being able to have a book to take home. If we expect for our parents to be able to assist in the learning that the teacher provides during the day, they don't stop learning once they get home. That's our hope. And so they need that textbook to be able to do that. The other question I have is about the vacancies. What are the current number of vacancies in the, in the school system at this time that have not been filled that, and I need a breakdown to know which ones are the need-to-fill positions, that are critical positions?
Okay. So to go back to your reading recovery and the importance of reading comment, since we've, over the past two years, we have made literacy a focus. And I want to communicate to the public that reading recovery as a program, you know, is not our first instruction reading emphasis program. It didn't touch, we have, you know, we have 86,000 children. And, and the program touched a very small number of those 86,000 children. So when we talk about a literacy program, it's what we have been developing. We just recently developed a literacy plan for the entire district, working in collaboration with some of our universities and partners in Nashville. And we have collaborated to develop Blueprint 2025, which is our early literacy plan, from, from pre-K through third grade. What are we doing to really accelerate? And we have, you know, 19 clear recommendations we're working on to make sure that reading is a priority. Our key, the key here, and I think one of the reasons we've not moved forward as a city in literacy, is that we had not focused on first instruction. So when I'm talking about literacy, I'm talking about what do we do to get first instruction right? And that's what our plans are enacting, and you'll see us executing in the, in the coming years. I agree with you on the textbooks issue. We do have to figure out a way to get dollars there, because we need to make sure if we're, we want kids to read, they have to have the books to read. It's just very, very basic. And, you know, we've got lots of schools within the district that don't have classroom libraries. And again, that's another thing lots of teachers have valiantly spent their own dollars on, building up books. And we've been working with the Public Education Foundation to target our neediest schools and getting them classroom libraries. And we've been successful in doing that. I think they've raised over $1 million and executed. It's about $35,000 a school to really get those classroom libraries in, and we've been working to do that. And we can get you specific information on our vacancies.
Okay. And also, I want to know, not the redistributed central office positions, but those that still remain in the central office, I want a breakdown of those positions that are 70,000 and above. And why I'm asking that is, when we look at the cost of living adjustment, I'm the same as all the other council members. I want the teachers and the support staff to get the cost of living. That is just critically important. Somebody making 70,000 or more in the central office, I just don't think they need to have a cost of living adjustment. They're already making too much. So I need a breakdown of anybody within that category, so that when we do crunch these numbers, that we are at least giving the cost of living adjustment to those who are truly doing the work with our children, who are support employees and our teachers. And so I'll end by saying that, again, I think you all have demonstrated excellent fiscal leadership. I support you, Dr. Joseph and the school board, and Chris, and everyone at MNPS. Whatever it takes for this council body to ensure that every child and every school has the resources needed, so that we can be the top-performing school district, that I know we are, because I have two children that graduated from Metro National Public Schools, and they are college graduates and doing exceptionally well. So I know what Metro schools can offer. And my children weren't in the gifted, in the advanced placement, none of that. They were average children that got an excellent education, and they have gone on to be very successful in their careers. So I commend all the teachers for everything you do, and our support staff, and our bus drivers, because those are roving classrooms. And, and I appreciate what you all are doing. And I am committed, as a council member who was previously a board member, that understands the importance of education. I'll make sure the funds are available to support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady Johnson. Mark, more pointedly, we need to know what that number is, as opposed to, in addition to who they are, Council Lady Johnson's request. I don't want to modify her request. But for the committee, we need to know that, what that monetary amount is. Thank you. Council Lady Johnson, Mina Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate entertaining our noncommittee members' question. Everybody said it, we would like to see public school fully funded. But everybody knows, you are the deciding body. You know, as a school board, you have authority, and we, as a council member, has no authority to overlay an item. So for having said that, I would like to see why you became this recommended budget the way it is. So I would like to ask a series of questions, if I may, using this book. So if we become, we find extra revenue source with some mechanism, or if we find some other funding by another mechanism, so when we find those extra sources, we can come back to you and ask, "Please fund this line item and so forth," if we may. So for that, so I would like to ask probably Mr. Henson, starting with page number one. There's two line items you said, certified insurance, insurance trust, and TCRS state plan. Those are required by state, 6.35 million and 4.73 million. Is this other amount required by state and just set aside, you as a school body don't have any access, you just have to put aside?
Can you repeat that last bit of your question, please?
Yes. How does the money will be allocated, or is it just put aside for the future use for the retiree of the insurance premium?
The certificated insurance premium, the employee pays 25% of the premium, the employer of the school district pays 75%. And that 7.9% increase was based upon the actuarial study and the recommendation from the consultant to the insurance trust to, because the insurance trust fund is a separate fund, and it's to keep that trust fund healthy, based upon all of the data that goes into the calculation, the medical claims history, the medical inflation, et cetera. And so that is a separate fund that that 6.35 million dollars will go into, that the district will pay. And then the employees themselves, the certificated employees, would pay an additional 25% of that premium amount that also will go into the trust fund coffers. Regarding the pension rate, this would be, actually be paid to the state, since all of our teachers and certificated employees are required to be members of the state retirement plan. So this is a requirement where the school district would have to increase its employer contribution rate from 9.08% to 10.46% of total payroll. And that money is just paid, billed by the state, and then paid to the state for our certificated employees that are in the state plan.
Thank you. So those are two line items specifically used for retirement teachers' purpose, insurance, and so forth?
Correct, correct.
No other purpose?
Correct. Insurance and pension costs, correct.
Great. Next one, the line item, page 1, 2137. And then I would like to go back to page 16. So that's the Advanced Academies breakdown. On this, I think, last year's budget items under other expenses, $713,400, and reduced by 278,080, but still remaining 434,600, which is explained to as exam fees for student reduce. So in other words, you know, other members' questions about examining fee, but those fees are still available to a certain group of the student?
The fees themselves, there are some of those exam fees where students can request a waiver, based upon family income level. But those fees would still exist to take those end-of-course exams that would determine whether or not the student could, if it's an advanced academics course, could test out of having to take a college course for that advanced academics course.
Okay, so we, you know, as a council, we have been receiving lots of email, "Please reinstate AP fees and so forth." So those families who have clarified in that position, they are still available to request those exam fee paid by MNPS?
They would not be able to, under this revised budget proposal, they would not be able to request reimbursement of those fees by MNPS. They could request the waiver that goes from, I believe it goes through the state in many cases, based upon family income, which is a reduced fee. But this revised budget scenario would go back to the way that the fees have been paid historically, except for the current year. The current year is the first year where we made the change. And so this revised budget proposal would mean we would go back to the way we were doing it historically, where students would pay for those exam fees, to take those exam fees.
Okay, so for that, what 434,600 will be used for then?
Well, on page one, we are estimating the advanced academics.
Yes, I'm talking about page 16, line item 2117, five. Because last year's budget was $713,400, and then reduced by 278,800. And then proposed budget still lists 434,600. It says exam fee. It says exam fees for students.
I would have to get with the advanced academics department to see exactly what that breakdown is.
Okay. Thank you. So if I may, move to page 20. I think it's STEAM, line item 2282. Detail goes to page 20. And in this, under STEAM, 2282, salaries and certificate. The last year's budget is $98,300. And this year's proposed budget is $121,600. It says Director of STEAM. So is this a salary increase proposal of $23,300?
No, I believe that last year, the, I'm not sure of the specifics, but this was to bring the salary amount of that position to actual numbers. And so there was not necessarily an increase in that individual. We've had more than one individual in that role. And so I don't know the details on the 2017-18 number, but that would have been a different individual that now is fulfilling the role of the Director of STEAM. But I would have to, again, go back and look at the details. But this was reflecting the actual salary amount for that position.
Okay. On the same page, you know, contracted service. Last year was $2,363,200. And it would be cut by $2,113,100. But still remains $250,000 as a proposal development as a, under contracted service. So 200, so the STEAM contract is not entirely cut, but keeping $250,000 as a contract? Am I reading it right?
If you look in the remarks column, that's not just the contract for STEAM. That also includes professional development. It includes repairs on some of the science equipment. It includes contracted temporary staff. So it's not only the contract for STEAM through the contractor that's included in that line item, it's several different items.
So for example, something like, if, within those STEAM schools, if you wanted substitute time, you wanted teachers out for professional development, and within that $250,000, dollars would be used to pay for the substitutes, to go in for the teachers to be freed, to do the training and things of that nature. And that adds up when you have thousands of teachers.
So the substitute teachers are specific to STEAM program?
No, substitute teachers are not specific to a STEAM program. But you can use substitutes. If a teacher, we wanted to release a teacher to do some training, then you have to pay for the substitute when the teacher goes out to get trained.
Yes. But if that's the case, why it's a line item is specifically included in STEAM line item?
Because for that STEAM program, you would have teachers who would need training. And then there could be substitutes used for that specifically designated for STEAM.
So it comes back to my original question. So those substitute teachers are specifically used for STEAM program? Isn't it not?
Maybe I'm not understanding. So substitutes are used for lots of different reasons. Within STEAM, they could say, we're going, a principal can say, I'm going to have, I'm going to designate 10 days and for 20 teachers, and I'm going, this is going to be the specific amount as a part of that. So that's, it's not just for subs. I was just giving you an example of that could be used for that, if that makes sense.
Yes, I understand how substitute may be used. But I'm just specifically asking because these $250,000 are included in STEAM line item as a contractor?
The STEAM account also includes the hands-on science kits. So you can see that there are, the staff for the hands-on science is also located here, as well as the materials to replenish the hands-on science kits that are used at the elementary level. And a lot of this contracted temporary staff is used to, as we go and deliver the science kits out to schools and then have to go back out and pick those science kits back up and replenish them with the supplies. So it's not just STEAM only in this account. It also, it does include the hands-on science program.
Okay. Thank you. So my next question is line item 2232, Literacy Program Reading Recovery, page 19. So as you have been stated, I understand you are cutting the position of 85. And however, the proposed item budget shows 19.5274. So total teacher, 85, and will be eliminated, but 19.5 teacher position will be saved? Is this the only teacher you will be saving under this line item?
This area also includes the reading interventionists that we would still have. It also includes the reading recovery leads, one and a half of those positions so that our reading recovery teachers that want to maintain their reading recovery certification, or if we have teacher, additional teachers that want to become reading recovery certified, we have those leads that allow that certification to happen. So this is not just reading recovery teachers only. This also includes our reading interventionists.
Okay. So, thank you. I just want to ask a couple of questions not in the line item. So we talked about substitute teachers. And I understand, you know, as teachers sometimes have personal issues or vacation, whatever the case might be, or family emergency, they have to take off. And so for that, you know, substitute teachers are needed. But how many substitute teachers' positions are filled? Is there any class, sometimes you're having hard time filling those substitute teachers' position?
We can get your information on our fill rate. There are challenges with getting substitutes on a daily basis. Last year, we increased substitute pay as a way to hopefully encourage. And then we, at the beginning of last year, we did work to get additional assistance in securing substitutes. But it has been a continuous challenge. But we can get you information regarding our fill rate.
Yeah, that'd be great. I appreciate that. And also, you know, school safety, because that's no joke. I mean, it has been happening every state. So do you have any specific drill or plan to keep our students safe?
We do practice drills. We do have, at our middle schools and high schools, we do have an armed police officer in all of our buildings. And we, our elementaries do not, but we do work with our police department. And, you know, we keep our buildings secured. You know, all of our buildings have, you know, restricted access to get buzzed in. That we think the best way to keep children safe is to invest in social emotional learning and make sure that our teachers know the triggers of students and we can recognize if there are red flags and we can provide students with the tools that they need to manage their emotions and behaviors. And that's why we are adamant that we need to continue to invest in social emotional learning.
So I appreciate that. And for that, you know, school's security and safety, I would like to ask one more question in relate to that, you know, election. Because school is, becomes one of the voting location. So sometimes those are the day general public can come. Hopefully, people will go there just to vote. But, you know, that would be rather vulnerable days. So do you have any plan, maybe in the future, you may want to ask school to be excluded as a voting site? Or alternatively, school will be closed for the voting days?
We did put a waiver into the state. The state told us no. We have communicated with our principals to make sure that we have extra precaution on this day. We don't, we don't have, we don't make the decision to have the polling within the schools. I think that's out of our control. We just have to manage it when we're told that that's the case.
As we're putting our school calendar together for the next year, we do attempt to schedule non-student instructional days on established voting dates. There are times when voting dates are established after the calendar has already been set. And sometimes, like tomorrow, it would, it's established in a very quick manner. And we have been working, trying to work very closely with the Election Commission, because by state law, the Election Commission has the authority to determine where the polling sites will be located. And all governmental buildings are available. And they, as you said, and as we know, there are a large number of schools that are used as school, as polling sites. But we do try to schedule our calendar around established voting dates. But there are times when, when we don't know what those voting dates are. For instance, if there is a runoff date, that date has not been set. And so we don't know what that date might be in the future. But we are working closely with the Election Commission. And we do attempt to beef up our security at our schools that are used as polling sites on election days. And we work closely with the police department to that effect as well.
Thank you. My last question is, I understand, Dr. Joseph, you are very, very passionate about restoring equity, you know, district-wide. Because, you know, based on the zip code, sometimes educational opportunity may not be equal, such as, you know, building and so forth. And I understand you have conducted district-wide faculty, you know, and the program, facility and program survey. And I think you have used a consultant and come up with some kind of report. Would you be able to share that result of the district-wide facility and program evaluation?
Yeah, so, yes, we have a report from a group called MGT. We can get that information to you that talks about our facilities uses. And we use that to develop our capital improvement budget in general, as we look at facilities. But we also have a program that we began last year called MNPS Next, which helped us look at programming across the district and helped us look at where we have under enrollment and things of that nature. I can have Mark North speak with you to understand which one would be most useful for you to see. But we will get that to you.
Yes, that'd be great. Because, you know, when we discuss about the capital spending plan, and you will have to have a difficult decision to prioritize because of the, you know, limited resource. So those reports will be very helpful for us to facilitate as well. And at last, I really want to thank you for your commitment and the passion. And thank you so much for the teachers, you're still here. And we really appreciate your commitment and, you know, passion to educating all the children. And thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. Council Lady Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me start off by saying first, Dr. Joseph, School Member Hunter, and the rest of your great team. I really appreciate how hard you all have worked, the successes that you all have made, the, how you have really hankered down and tried to make the best out of a budget with the funds that you have. I really appreciate that. For any of the folks that are, I guess I mostly have comments now because a lot of my questions were already asked, and I appreciate you going through them.
Council Lady Lee, I'm going to move us along. Do you have a question as it relates to the operating?
Okay. So in the things, but I do want to say thank you again to you all. So in the report that you talked about the insurance, you showed, you said that the insurance was going up. But you didn't say if you all were going to absorb that or if the teachers were actually going to have to pay an increase in their insurance cost?
Yes. So the employees pay 25% of the premium, the same as metro government employees. And so there would be an increase in cost to the teacher for their 25% portion of the premium increase. And then the school district pays 70, the other 75% of the premium increase, again, the same as the split between employees and metro government.
Okay. So then actually, teachers that are using the state's insurance will now be getting less pay?
And it's not the state insurance. It's for metro teachers as part of the insurance trust. But the answer to your question is yes. The teachers, if they do not receive a raise, will have less take-home pay because there will be a 25, there will be a 7.9% increase in the premium.
So then my other remark I will make is, one of the questions I had to ask was about your priorities. And you listed them earlier for us. You said if you had, if you got some extra funds, your priorities would be the salary increase, AP courses, parapros and textbooks. I would just ask you to think about as you do those, because those are really good priorities. But as you think about them, because nothing happens without the parapros, without bodies in there, that you may change the place of them some and put your salary increases and your parapros and then your AP courses and your textbooks. And for anybody that is watching and have heard you talk about the step increases and the, and a possible raise, I hope that they know that step increases are not raises. They are part of the salary schedule, is part of what was the expectation when teachers came along. So they are not raises themselves. But thank you all very much for what you do.
Thank you, Council Lady.
And answering our questions.
Councilman Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all for being here. Dr. Joseph, just to put a fine point on Council Lady Mina Johnson's question about the election. You heard from parents who had concerns about being open, request a waiver from the state, which they've done in the past, and they refused, leaving us no option but to be open tomorrow, correct?
Well, there's always the option. There was always the option that we could have voted to still cancel school that day. So, but we put in the waiver so it wouldn't be, so there was no option for it not to count. If we would have, if we would have canceled school, we would have had to add a day because we would have been over.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hanson, with respect to our friend line 7777, that artificially inflates per pupil spending for political purposes, have you been able to confirm that that does not increase the charter school per pupil allocation?
It does not. When we calculate, and actually, it's the State Department of Education's calculation, when they calculation, when they calculate the per pupil amount, that line item is excluded because, as was previously indicated, it's actually a reduction in property tax revenue as opposed to an expense. And so the state law requires total state and local revenue per pupil. And that would actually be a reduction in local revenue because it is a property tax refund. So it is excluded in the charter calculation per the Department of Education.
Great. Thank you. And as far as the election, when it comes to planning, runoffs are always five weeks after. If it helps, you know, to plan for a runoff in advance, it's always, even though it's not officially set, it's always five weeks out. Is there, outside of the money in the budget, in this operating budget, is there SEL money from other sources? Federal budget or anything like that?
Yes. $2 million is coming from our Title I dollars that we're focusing on. I'm not sure about additional grants or other dollars off the top of my head, but I can find out.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I think, Mr. Hanson, you mentioned earlier that, I'm jumping around because I got some questions from other committee members, that there weren't school cuts after all. So like, a lot of the schools in my cluster won't be seeing those six-figure cuts that we were seeing before?
Now, the school budgets are set and approved. And so whatever the ending amount allocation, the allocated amount for individual schools was, based upon exception hire requests, based upon additional exceptional education teachers that were approved by the Exceptional Education Department, whatever those individual school budgets that were actually approved within the last two or three weeks, those will not be reduced through this revised budget. So we would So we would not, because we're having to reduce our request by $39.7 million from the original proposal, none of that $39.7 million would come out of individual school budgets.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Well, then to that end, do you have the 81 and 1/2 reading recovery teachers, and these are high-quality teachers who aren't gonna sit and wait around hoping to get hired later, given that school budgets are really tight? So have most of them already been rehired into other positions?
We can get that information for you specifically. I don't have the facts yet, but it's something that we are communicating as a priority and we're monitoring. But we do have, we do know we have available vacancies, but I don't have, I don't have the specifics on how many have been hired and have not to date.
Do you know if any have been hired into priority schools?
Yes, I do, because priority schools that had them, I do know principals that have kept them, but I don't have the specifics again.
Okay, I appreciate that. As far as the reading recovery, last year, you told us that it was magic, and then encouraged us to come, and it was in your budget until the final vote. What happened in the interim between that almost last budget and the, the one that came out right before the school board meeting where you voted?
I believe, well, the issue, the issue that we had here is that we had to make a decision on if we're gonna continue to put $7 million in a program that we had received a, a more recent external report to indicate, validate the report that we had internally, that said we just weren't getting the results that we would like to see. And so it was the, when you ask about how to use dollars, and our original theory of action that we talked about from the time we walked into the district, which said, if we focus on culture and data and first literacy instruction, we'll have better academic achievement. We made the decision, particularly when we got the study that week before, we were making the decision that validated the two studies that we had, that showed that it was not getting the result we intended. We decided to make the, the, the case to shift.
So that was, so that was the result of a study that came in between the time you had originally proposed your budget and the one that you ended up ultimately passing?
Well, because we knew we had to make tough decisions with a, you know, and then, and these are difficult budget times, and one of the things we said we were going to do was begin to start making decisions based upon data that we had. And then here, we had three studies that showed we were spending dollars there. Well, one of the things that Mr. Henson started doing as a result of conversations with Talia and the mayor's office last year, was we said we were gonna start really focusing on making sure that our dollars aligned to our strategic plan, and that we were getting a return on investment in programming. So we started, we knew in September, we were evaluating the program. We asked for an independent study, because there were questions, and there were a lot of internal politics about, you know, people hold on to programs, and people get real guarded over programs. So one of the things we said we wanted to do was just, you know, have an independent study come in, so that takes the politics out of, you know, people pressuring internal people to, you know, questioning the results. So when we saw that third external study that was commissioned by Hanover Research that we started, I believe in September, October, it took them time, and we just happened to get the report that, I believe, Mr. Dr. Changus, who's our head of, head of assessment, said it actually came like the week before or so, we were making, in the decision-making process, so, you know, there's never a wrong time to make a right decision, in our opinion. So when we had the data and we had time to act upon it, we did.
So, this is just something that came into my mind, the data shows, from my understanding, that it works for a while, and then if you don't continue with it, it kind of falls off, which sounds like the same thing as happens with pre-K and, and their studies, that if you don't continue, continue staying on top of the situation with children, that the effects begin to wear off a little bit. So i- is that accurate, and does that affect your commitment to pre-K?
So it goes to our theory of action, which is we have to invest in first instruction. So when I look at pre-K, we've not expanded pre-K, what we said, so it's the same kind of philosophy, because what we said was with pre-K, before we start expanding, we need to focus on the quality. And so we have spent time looking at not just expanding, but looking at what are the quality indicators, and how do we ensure that there's quality before we expand. As it relates to the literacy piece, we said we're spending 6.2 or 7 million dollars in an intervention, but we're not putting those same dollars in first instruction. So we said, if we're going to scale literacy in the district and ensure that our kids can achieve the high standards that we have set in the state, then we need to shift our dollars on first instruction. And then once we feel we got first instruction going right at scale, then we can start putting more significant dollars in interventions, like a reading recovery.
Thank you. Regarding the, the, I want to ask about a lot of, as far as the budget shortfall that became clear back in October, that was gonna happen because the students didn't show up to the numbers that student assignment thought was gonna happen. What actions were taken in the fall to begin addressing the budget shortfall?
We waited until we had the January revised BEP estimate from the Tennessee Department of Education, so that we would know what the actual amount is going to be. And so once we received that January revised BEP allocation amount, that reflected the $7.5 million difference between what was budgeted and what was projected that we were going to receive, because there's always a January adjustment for the state health insurance component in the funding formula, because it's on a calendar-year basis. So we, once we knew what that, we knew what that $7.5 million amount was going to be at that point in time, and then when Metro Finance decided that Metro Government was going to institute a modified hiring freeze slash spending freeze, we decided internally that we were going to attempt to do the same, to partially offset or mitigate the difference between what we believe we're going to receive in BEP funding and our expenses. We also were monitoring, at that point, the sales tax budget, as well as the property tax revenue, because those make up other sources of our funding, and so it's not just only the, the state BEP funding that's, that's our, that's our revenue. In fact, that's a fairly small, it's approximately 32% of our total operating budget revenue. And so we made the decision after Metro Government decided to institute the hiring freeze to do, to do the same and to, to follow along with that same concept.
So that was in January that you started adjusting to the October numbers?
It, it was not, it was actually in early March when we, we made the decision and ultimately started implementing.
So e- even if you didn't have the amount of the BEP shortfall, you knew in October that there would be a shortfall, but it was five more months before any adjustments were made?
We were monitoring all sources of, of funding, not just the BEP funding, because historically, other sources of funding have come in above budget, sales tax revenue and property tax revenue, so the answer is, that's correct. We did not do anything until later on, once we knew what the number was.
And I'll, I'll jump in and just add, that, you know, when you freeze, when you put a freeze on, it has an impact on everything. So we would want to put a freeze on, you know, as late as possible, because we don't want to tell schools in October, everything is frozen. That, that has a significant detrimental impact on schools. So we monitored and wanted to be specific and clear, because what you don't want to do is disrupt our, our schools and school operations early, as we're monitoring, to be, to be clear. I think that's, you know, knowing, when we did it in March, people didn't like it. They would have really not liked it if we did it in October, without knowing the specifics, and if we really had to, the degree to which we would have to.
Thank you. Is it accurate that there are some employees being paid up to $30,000 over scale?
So we, you said $30,000 over scale?
Yeah, over the salary guidelines.
Yeah, I can clarify that for you.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate that, and I'd love to know how many, why, and how much that costs in total, please, Mark.
All right, Councilman, come on.
I've got a lot of committee members.
I'm on the committee.
I know you are. You can add your questions on, but I'm trying to be less long, I'm trying to ask my questions quickly to leave time for answers. So since the 2014-15 budget, the administration costs have increased about 26%, and the categories under leadership and learning that are heavy in central office have gone up 41%, including the establishment of the Chief Academic Officer's Office, which is $2.5 million. HR has gone up $2 million. What's the reason for the large increases in the central office, especially in those particular departments?
Yeah, we can get you detail on those specifics. I would say, we, you know, I'd have to look at some of the specifics. We've built capacity within the school system. We were functioning too lean. We had a situation where principals, in my opinion, weren't being supervised to the point they needed to be supervised, that we weren't providing direct support to schools to the degree in which I felt we should be providing direct supports. And as a result of the change, you have seen over the past two years, as those costs have gone up slightly, and we're still under the average for the Council of Great City Schools, we have seen our student achievement improve, as we've talked about. So there, there is a return on investment factor and an execution factor, that I think that we need to look at, as we look at overall cost on things as well. But I can get you the specifics on some of the numbers that you alluded to, because I don't.
I'd appreciate it, because we're in.
I don't have the specifics.
We're in eight figures here, and I can think of some things that we could do with, with that kind of money. The other thing that speaks to teachers is that I continue to hear from teachers, something that predates you, and predates Chris, and goes back to the previous non-interim administration. That's a sense among teachers, administrators to some degree, but teachers, that there's this culture of fear. And I know that you've put together some meetings and, you know, and, or town hall-type situations, try to get, get teachers to talk about it a little more, but there seems to just be a feeling of a lack of respect, salary is part of it, but, but also just a feeling that their opinions aren't valued, and that they're kind of becoming a lower priority. Are there more concrete steps that can be taken to allow teachers the opportunity to express that without the fear of reprisals that they have right now?
I think you're speaking very generally, so it's kind of hard.
Yeah.
When, when, you know, I try to, it's kind of difficult when we, when we speak that broadly, but I would agree that we do need to work on culture. As an organization of 11,000 employees, I would say, over the past two years, we have worked on some culture issues. One, we're actually monitoring culture, and we're, we're actually gathering survey data. We give it to all staff, and it's anonymous, to gather how schools and offices are, you know, performing, and we're working with Vanderbilt to do that, so we can really measure it and, and measure it over time. So the good news is, we are measuring. Two, I think we've started voice sessions with employees. I think we had eight this year, where we just opened it up for teachers to come out and share whatever it is they would like to share, and speak directly with me, open format, no, no real structure, so we can hear and follow through. We've also been systemically working on our mindsets and working to build collaborative relationships. I will say, a big part of the culture piece is when the adults begin publicly not, not communicating effectively with one another, and publicly name-calling and, and things of that nature. That creates a culture that's not positive within the organization, so I think we all have to work on that collectively. And if we all do that, I think we'll be in a much better place than we are right now. But I'm optimistic, we're, we're gonna get there, and I think there's a commitment to do that, because we have to stay focused on our kids.
Thank you, yeah, I think it's to everybody's benefit for teachers to feel that they're respected. Money is certainly part of it, but I think it's a much different, a much lower level than feeling their, their opinions are valued. I think dissent in a body, I think would be, I think it's important to have dissent in any body or any organization. If everybody's just going along to get along, we get in trouble, and people trying to talk with one voice is never a good place to be.
No, but I think focusing on the how, it's not the what, it's always the how that gets you.
Yeah, I agree. Just two more. One, in a, in a, an environment where folks think that testing tells you anything more than how good a group of kids are at taking a test, and where a lot of that's coming from the federal level, some from the state, but also the local level, how do you combat the narrative that a school's worth is at all related to how well kids do coloring, coloring in circles on a few tested subjects? How do you get that, or, this is, this isn't a question I'm expecting you to have the answer to, because it's, I think it's a big question and a challenge we all face, is stopping people from valuing a school or a school system by comparing it to schools or a school system with a far different population. Is there any initiative that you're aware of that's being done, either in other school systems, or that you're undertaking here, to try to help kill that narrative?
Yeah, well, we've established a committee to look at assessments, because we do think kids are overtested right now, just in general. I think it's important, I, but I do believe tests matter. I mean, you don't, you don't get into medical school, law school, or a good, a good college without, you know, doing well on, on some test, so I don't, I don't dismiss tests in general, and I think, but, but for us, what I care about is growth. I think you gotta have a good test to know where you are, and you've got to, you've got to be able to assess along the way whether you're growing or not. And, and, you know, I don't, absolute measures, I mean, aren't, aren't as big a deal to me as whether a child, do we know where a child is, and over time, are they growing? And I think we need to give fewer tests, but give more high-quality tests to measure if children are accurately growing. I think there was a recent article talking about the fact that Tennessee just has been rated pretty favorably in general, on the fact that we're at least measuring, our, our standards are as high as any other in the nation, and I think that's a good thing. And I think we need to let families know where their children are in reading and math. Two years ago, when we came into the district, families didn't know how well their children were reading, or how well they were doing in math, on a, a real, you know, rigorous test. Now we know, and that's a good thing, because if my child's behind, I want to know, because I want to know collectively what we're doing to get them caught up. So, you know, I think some testing is good, too much testing is bad, and we're working to pull tests back, so we can just give that right amount of testing, so families know with a sense of assurity that their children are growing. And if they're not growing, then, then the district, they should look at us and say, why not?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, and I'm happy to see how my son is doing at the beginning of the year versus the end of the year. I think the problem is outside of the family, is where people go to, you know, a garbage website that says this school is a C, or, you know, a seven out of 10, or a three out of 10, and think that there's any, any value to that.
Yeah, as a district, I know the board and I both strongly oppose grading schools in that way.
Right. And finally, Chair Lady, can you get me a total amount and, of how much MNPS is planning on spending for outside consultants, and a breakdown of those function, and, and why those aren't being handled internally, please? Mark?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Councilman Rosenberg. I saw Director Lomax O'Neal left, and I understand it's late in the hour, but I have to give my announcements. Today concludes the Metro Council fiscal year 2018-2019 operating budget hearings. We've had eight days, over 50-plus departments, thanks to Metro Department Heads, staff, community stakeholders, council members, and especially those Budget and Finance Committee members that's been here for, for every hearing. As you are aware, we must pass an operating budget before June 30th. If we do not present a substitute that we can agree 30. If we do not present a substitute that we can agree upon, the mayor's recommended budget goes into effect July 1. With that said, we will not be doing budget work sessions this year. We have a status quo budget, so work sessions are not needed. On your desk, you should have the budget reallocation form. I'm asking that you submit those to council staff by June 1. On that form, you're going to need to identify the priority, the department that you want to take funds from, and where you want to have those funds reallocated to. And for the viewing audience, where we are in this budgetary process, we have the mayor's recommended budget. How it works for this body is that, without additional revenues, we have to identify where we're going to reallocate funds from and reappropriate to somewhere, to somewhere else. Again, if we don't come up with a, an agreed substitute budget before June 30, the mayor's recommended budget will go into effect July 1. I see we have a committee member seeking recognition. Councilman Glover?
Yeah, just very quickly, Chair. So let me, I think.
And I didn't, and I didn't announce, so committee members, you get one day off, and I know we're going into the holiday weekend. We will meet Friday, 6 o'clock, the jury room, and we're just going to go and review what worked with this process, the sharepoint, and how we want to go ahead. And we're not going to be discussing capital, but we're going to need to go ahead and outline what that process is moving forward. But go ahead, Councilman Glover.
Yeah. So I think maybe there were some calendars that said we would be having work sessions next week, so you're saying no to the work sessions?
We are not.
So everything we're going to do is going to be based on the form? I just want to make sure I'm following the format that the chair.
You are. Remember, last year, we had wish lists.
Right.
This year, we're, we're status quo. There's, there's no wish list.
And so areas, because I've identified a number of areas that I feel like we can make cuts that are nonessential for services in Nashville. And, but in doing so, I want to make sure there's not unintended consequences with regards to perhaps federal, federal matching dollars, or this, or that state matching dollars, et cetera. So once we give this, I would assume, and I would just want, rather than assuming, I want to make sure, I'm sure that you, as the chair, will probably talk with our legal counsel.
Absolutely.
And then let committee members know what kind of shortfalls are, what pitfalls, I should say, that we may happen to run into with some of the ideas that may be borne out of the discussions as we go forward.
Absolutely. And making sure that what we're doing, one, we can actually do. So absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Remember, we have a big task ahead of us, and it's going to test a lot of political will. So June 1, I ask that you have those submitted. Committee members, I will see you Friday. I know it's the Friday before the holiday, but we, we have to get, we have to get, get this done. School board member, Chair Hunter, I guess, right, is seeking recognition. The floor is yours.
Yes. I would just like to thank you, council members, for everything that you do, and to say that your job is huge, because everything you do, it relates to the city of Nashville. But I would like to add that a city can grow too fast. And an indication of that is when you're leaving your people behind. Our teachers are professionals, and when our teachers cannot afford to live in this city, you guys have to stop and think about the decisions that you're making and the things that you're adding to the city. So please keep in mind that our city can grow too fast. It's not, it's okay to grow, but we have to grow our people with our city. There's a good book by Richard Florida called The New Urban Crisis. I would encourage you guys to read it, because Nashville is starting to look like one of those mega cities, and we're leaving our people behind. So that is all I have to add. Thank you for everything you do, and we look forward to hearing our budget.
Thank you so much. They have a budget book to read, Chair Hunter. With that said, I want to, again, thank MEA, I believe TEA was here, Congressman Cooper's, SEIU, and the administration, they're still here, council staff is still here, school board members, and definitely my Budget and Finance Committee members. I have an awesome vice chair, and the council members that stayed with us tonight. Thank you so much. We are adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.